Good evening. It is six o'clock, Monday, April 26, 2021, and this is a school board briefing. Tonight, we have one particular item on the agenda, and it is our pre-briefing for the 2021-2022 Student Code of Conduct, and it'll cover pre-K, five, their code of conduct, and also the one for sixth through 12th grades. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce Tammy Scott. She's the coordinator for teaching and learning, who will introduce the gentleman sitting at the front of the room. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Along with me this evening is Mr. Brian Mangan and Mr. Chuck Bradley, as well as all of the other administrators in our Student Services Department in the audience with us. Mr. Sills, if you could, display the presentation. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, so tonight's conversation is going to be separated into two different sections. The first section, we're going to discuss the recommended changes inside the structure of the Code of Conduct itself. Then, we have built in some time to ask questions, or you ask us questions, and we answer those questions, as well as provide us feedback. Then, the last part of our conversation this evening is going to be around the Equity Poster. At the end, there will be question-answer time and feedback, and then we will turn it over to Ms. Betsy Vaughn. Okay? Without further ado.
Thank you, Board members, Superintendent. Begin with, I'm going to touch on the School Environmental Safety Incident Reporting System, because it'll be important later on in our presentation. The Cessar, as it's commonly called, grew out of the public's concern that children be safe in the school environment. In 1995-96, in response to this concern, the Cessar system was initiated to enable schools to track incidences and not analyze patterns of violent criminal or disruptive activity.
Mr. Mangan, could you go a little closer to your microphone, please, and thank you?
Thank you. The intent was to be complete and objective data from which to design interventions to improve the learning environment. Cessar operates at the school district and state levels. School-level data is sent to the district in a standardized format, and in turn, the district sends the data to the Department of Education, where it's compiled into an annual report and published. This report represents the frequency of the Cessar incidents by district and for the state as a whole. Additionally, the disciplinary actions associated with the incidents are reported. And Cessar operates on a four-level system, with the most serious receiving what they would designate as a one-star, all the way to a four-star for the least serious of the 26 incidences that they have identified. Starting back in November with informal conversations, the annual process to bring the Code of Conduct for board review and adoption began. In December and January, the working groups, which consisted of a variety of different people, as appropriate, met to work on reviewing our current Code of Conduct, and also to review the other school districts that we were looking to for possible examples of best practices. The left-hand side also shows the opportunities that district-level administrators had to share some input in regards to the five levels that is being recommended for student discipline later on this evening. And also, the principal-level groups that were presented to back in the later part of March did include those schools that are our special centers and our K-8 schools. So, all of our building-level principals and assistant principals had the opportunity to receive the presentation that is similar in design to what we're talking about this evening. On the right-hand side, we've had a variety of groups that were identified, and we were asked permission to present the recommendations and gather input from the Code of Conduct to bring to you tonight. The American Heart Association was very focused on tobacco and nicotine use by students. The Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee and the TAOC Student Discipline Committee, while there are two dates on there, we only originally scheduled one, but the leadership of both of those groups requested that we come back for a second opportunity to hear any further input that the different organizations wished to share with us. So, there was no second formal presentation, but we were there to gather more feedback. Of the hundreds of individuals that we presented to over the course of the last couple of months, we had roughly approximately about 50 or so students from the Success Academy and the School Board Student Advisory Committee receive a presentation and solicit feedback from them in regard to the Code of Conduct. We also had individuals listening in on the 13th of this month in regards to the board meeting, where this topic of the Equity Poster was discussed. And in constituent services, we had not received any phone calls or emails about the Code of Conduct until about 4:12, and then through last Friday, we received about 117 emails and 10 phone calls about the Code of Conduct, but we're focused on the Equity Poster himself. Then, tonight, of course, is our opportunity to bring to you these recommendations from the community for the first of a three-step process in looking for board approval of the Code of Conduct, hopefully by later in During these presentations, we organized it similar to how we are presenting this evening, where the recommendations are being done by exception by the major components that make up the Code of Conduct. The questions on the left-hand side reflect the similar questions, or word-for-word questions, that we asked the different groups to provide feedback on the introduction, rights and responsibilities, interventions and corrective actions, the discipline section, and finally, the essential information section. On the right-hand side, there are two bullets, numbers two and three, that are in addition, that we had looked at the other districts that make up the large 10, and the four other districts that make up Southwest Florida, and we noticed that there were some districts doing something a little bit different, and so we wanted to bring those things tonight for some board guidance and feedback on perhaps moving to a single Code of Conduct, or staying with the two that we currently have, staying with the annual process, or considering a three-year addition of the Code of Conduct. And then, of course, what we would ask at any of the presentations, was there anything else, anything else that the groups would like to share with us or comment on, because the questions were only preparatory and anticipatory in nature, in order to get folks thinking while we're doing the presentation. And that brings us to the first major component of the Code of Conduct, is the introduction. In asking the folks what else belongs inside the introduction, we received a couple of major suggestions. First, beginning with the updated version of the Focus Parent Portal Account Setup Instructions. The most noticeable change on this one is that no longer is the need to use social security numbers in setting up, or parents setting up an account to monitor their students' behavior, grades, and attendance.
Excuse me, Mr. Mangan. Sir, can you please sit down?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, sir, you're out of order. Excuse me, sir, you're out of order.
Please sit down. This is your warning. If you are, if you, excuse me, if you interrupt these proceedings again, you will be escorted out.
No boys in the girls' room.
Excuse me.
Ladies and gentlemen, there will be no...
Madam Chair. If there are any more outbursts, we will take a recess.
I'm sorry, I did, Mr. Pre-Bruno, I did ask the officer to escort the man out, because he did not listen to the first warning. Ladies and gentlemen, in the office, in the audience, there is no cheering, clapping. Please have respect for these proceedings.
Well, why don't you have respect for us?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May we have a five-minute recess, please?
I'm sorry.
Recession.
If we are to get through this presentation tonight, and this is what you came here to see, and I want to remind those of you who watched or were here two weeks ago for our board meeting, when there was a large crowd, you requested that we change our normal time of 1:00 to 6:00, and we were very respectful of that request. I believe it was Mrs. Gittens that brought it up, and we went along with it, and so, we changed our time so that all of you would have an opportunity to speak your mind and give your opinions. Now, please don't make that a mistake on our part, to, excuse me...
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Could we consider, if we're unable to get any work done because of the public speaking over us, could I recommend an adjournment to a date certain?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is not your decision when we meet on this. Now, again, we check...
Madam Chair.
Warning. To the person who called out, yes, Mr. Pre-Bruno.
So, let me, let me just advise the crowd. There are policies in place that dictate how this meeting is going to be run. Board Policy 2.02 talks about disruptive behavior. If we continue to have the disruption, the board will not be able to conduct the work that it needs to do. We appreciate that you're here, but they do need to do their work. There will be no clapping, hissing, or booing. This is the last warning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and if you will, please be respectful of this board as we do our work, as we listen to what these gentlemen and their team put together. This is a pre-briefing, so it's important for us to hear that and make a good decision. When it's time, we will listen to what all of you have to say, and again, we changed our meeting time so that we could do this, and we could have more people come in. So, please, listen. It's going to be a while on this presentation, and hopefully, it will be as enlightening to all of you as it is to us as board members, as we make our decisions going forth. Mrs. Giovinelli.
I would like to make a motion that we allow everyone 30 seconds to speak in the audience that wants to speak, because I'm afraid that they're not, everyone's going to be able to have the opportunity to speak, and if it's the will of the board, if we would allow that, it would cut it down to only 30 seconds a person, but this would show that we want people, we do want to hear you, and we do, we appreciate you coming out, and that's what I would like to see, if the board would allow for that.
Okay, this is a board motion.
Well, this is a briefing, so we don't necessarily have motions during the briefing, but you can make the request, and if there's a consensus from the board to suspend the policy. Right now, the policy is, public comments are limited to one hour. If there are 60 speakers, then it's one minute per speaker.
And how many cards do we have at this?
We have in excess of 60.
Okay. Board comments before I take a consensus on whether to suspend the policy. Board comments on what Mrs. Giovinelli proposed. Yes, Ms. Gittens.
Madam Chair, since everyone wants an opportunity to speak, and the audience is the community, and like you said, yes, you pay our salary, every dime we spend comes from you. So, I would like to propose that if you can follow the orders, that we would ask the audience to raise their hands, whether they would do 30 seconds to get more people, or follow the policy.
Well, we already have a suggestion, but that's an alternate suggestion. Other comments. Other board, other, other board opinions. Yes, Mrs.?
I would just like to see if we could move on with the presentation. We were scheduled to start at 6:00 to do this briefing. This is work that we had put off already, and I think that we owe it to the staff who came here to give us the presentation and to share with everyone else. I think this would answer a lot of questions.
Okay, let's, any other board members have a comment, and we do not answer questions from the audience from the dais, sorry. I feel like 30 seconds probably is not enough for most people to put forth what they want to say, and that's, that's my opinion on it. But let's go for a consensus. How many on the board wish to suspend our policy and allow every speaker who wants to, to speak for 30 seconds?
But Madam Chair, is it every speaker, or is it a time certain?
No, every speaker.
Is that what you said?
I said, I want to allow for everyone to have, have the opportunity to speak. At this point in time, they will not have that opportunity. I'm just trying to allow for that, that's all.
Right, and we can probably fit in...
You have a comment, don't you?
Yes, go ahead, Mrs.
Madam Chair, so, you do have your policy, which was what speakers were provided when they first came. There are some individuals who have left because they did not get on the list on time, so we have to be fair to those that were here and that did not have an opportunity to participate, because they were an adherent to the policy and understood that it was 60 speakers, well, 60 minutes, as many speakers as we can get in in 60 minutes, which is usually a minute per speaker, because that's what the policy says. So, I do want the board to take that into consideration as well, and I, and I do also want to make sure that the public understands, after the presentation, there will be an opportunity for you to speak. This is how the briefings are set up. First, the presentation is provided. The board must hear this information with regards to the Student Code of Conduct. This is a process. They have different meetings that they have to do with regards to this process and this policy. After that is completed, then you will have an opportunity to share your thoughts on what has been presented, only on what has been presented. We will not be discussing anything that does not have to do with the agenda, which is the Student Code of Conduct.
Okay, and that's another important point for all of us board members. Is there anybody else, or does anybody else need, board members, a clarification on our consensus? Yes, Mrs.
Pre-Bruno? I'm not clear on how we make an exception to a policy without an official vote. I don't think that consensus is sufficient to override the policy.
So, at this point, there is a request to allow additional audiences to speak. You would normally have to have a two-thirds majority vote to suspend the policy. You are not in an action meeting. This is an unusual circumstance, so...
Yeah, and we're just talking about for this particular one circumstance, to suspend it just for this meeting. So, how many board members thumbs up if you support to suspend it? And don't suspend it? Okay, so we, it's one to six. We are not suspending, each person who signed a card will have a minute to speak after the presentation, so we are not suspending our normal policy, which is up to 60 minutes total for all the speakers. So, let's continue with our presentation, please, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mrs. Vaughn. To continue, we left off at the part of a recommendation to add the whistleblower information into the introduction, which is consistent with Board Policy 5.331, which we quote directly from our district website. That's where we gathered the information and inserted it just below the grievance policy in the introduction. The last section of recommendations is to continue working with gender-neutral terms throughout the document, except in the following sections where we cite directly from our mission statement, grievance policy, or any other board policy. We're not changing those inside the Code of Conduct, to remain consistent with what's in current board policy. That brings us over to our rights and responsibilities section, which focuses on school authority for administration, teachers, bus drivers, et cetera, parent responsibility and rights, and also students. The recommendation was to bring forward some information that provides resources to parents. When we looked at the slide, the, the parent resource portion of our district website, it is quite robust with a lot of information that is being updated, added to, and sunsetted as appropriately, and so, our recommendation is to use the hot link inside the digital copy, and if it's a print copy, then they would have that opportunity to enter that into a search engine and find all those resources that the communications department maintains on a regular basis for parents. The last recommendation is to expand the model student behavior from the current three levels to five. I'll talk a little bit more about that later in the discipline section of the Code of Conduct presentation, because it is synchronized to match up with the behavior infractions being recommended to be expanded from three to five levels. The right-hand graphic of the slide does represent what our expectations of student responsibilities are in regards to being prepared on a daily basis for their education. Our next section of the Code Conduct is the interventions and corrective actions. This is where we were asking individuals to provide us, as an anticipatory question, how else can we recognize and celebrate student success? There is a page that has a list. It is not comp, it is not absolute or finite, and we did have a couple of recommendations, such as attendance awards and multicultural celebrations. We're always looking to add to that list, especially in schools that have unique and best practices. The next portion that was recommended, recommended to be added to the intervention section is the restorative practices. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bradley to talk a little bit more about that. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bradley to talk a little bit more about that.
So, we're pleased to include in this edition of the student code of conduct, our information about our district expectations concerning restorative practices, particularly affective communication, the use of proactive and restorative circles, and restorative conferencing. And so, just a little bit more information with that, we will be pleased to bring to the board, information regarding our five-year plan for restorative practices implementation into the district, as well as we would like to announce that we will be holding summer professional development this summer, including the original Journey to Restorative sessions that we offered last summer that were well-attended, as well as a Journey to Restorative, the Expedition Summer Conference. We continue to offer our book studies, and we'll continue that with our administrators and also our teachers, and we look forward to recognizing our Diamond, Double Diamond, and Triple Diamond recipients this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Moving into the discipline section, we do have an update from the state. Back in late December of 2020, they've changed breaking and entering to be burglary. While the definition has not changed, the name is the noted change in this portion of it. As mentioned earlier, that we met with the American Heart Association, and their focus was on the student tobacco and nicotine use. What they're recommending is on the first violation is something we would call in shorthand would be a student conference, in regards to them being found to be using tobacco, nicotine, vape devices, or electronic nicotine delivery systems, as the term that is reflected in our glossary. That would be something that a designated staff member would do with the student and involve the parents, in order to prevent further use of tobacco or nicotine products in our students. Second violation would entail a follow-up conversation, and then also students enrolled in an evidence-based tobacco education program as an alternative to an IS or an OS suspension. That is something that our interventions services department has already created, and it's an electronic format that allows the students to proceed at their own pace, and it is going to be monitored by one of the individuals at the school that is designated with that task. The American Heart Association also had a third and subsequent violation recommendation, but that recommendation is pretty robust, and right now, we're not prepared to move forward with that, because we need to work with them and our interventions department to develop a strategy and a plan to implement their recommendation, which revolves around a 60-day plan to work with the student that is found to be repetitively using tobacco or nicotine products, along with several other things to try and mitigate that occurrence in our students. The graphic on the screen represents the quick reference guide that we have in our code of conduct, as the consequences and responses of moving from our current three levels to five. As you see up there right now, I'd like to orientate you to the bottom right-hand corner of it, those yellow parentheses numbers represent where the recommendation would be to move a discipline behavior infraction to the proposed expansion to five levels. If there is no number next to it, that means it is still residing in the same spot that it was in under the three levels. You will note that on level one and two, there are some repetitions, particularly other rule violations, petty theft, and profanity. The reason that they're showing up in levels one and two is because under those sections, when you look in the packet that was provided under board documents, there are some nuances to those type of infractions, and they're pretty extensive, and so there needs to be an appropriate response. An example would be petty theft. Last year, the state moved the level of petty theft from $300 up to $750 as a limit. In response, our district proposed and was approved to use the dollar amounts as a guide to have a response to a student conducting, being caught with petty theft. We surely wouldn't want to discipline a student who might have stole a chocolate milk from the line, the same as somebody who might have stolen a pair of Beats headphones from another student. I think the response must be appropriate, and our approach to discipline reinforces that. As you look at the responses to these behavior infractions in our code of conduct, there is a host of options that are available to the building-level administrators that work with our students in disciplinary manners. And this flexibility helps build relationships, helps develop the context of the situation that they find themselves in, gives them the opportunity to work with parents, with the goal stated by this board and our superintendent in the past, of trying to keep students in school as much as possible. However, as you look left to right, you'll see that there are increasing levels of severity. Mentioned before that the Cessor considers level, one-star level, to be the most severe. Historically, we've put our most severe offenses as a level three. Would it be possible to reverse this? Yes, but that would be something we would look for a recommendation from you all on. However, we feel that staying with the level five being the most severe would keep within consistency with the practices already established in our district. When you look at the middle level, level three, you'll notice that alcohol is listed there. The state considers that their least, one of the least serious offenses, along with tobacco, bullying, and harassment. However, based on the input we received from our community members and different groups, it was determined to move alcohol from a level two and keep it in the level three as it sits presently on the recommendation. Also of note is level five, weapons possession. The state considers this the second most serious level of offense. However, in looking at the other 10 large school districts and the four districts that surround us in southwest Florida, it was almost near unanimous that weapons possession is considered the most severe, mainly because it involves students who might possibly bring a firearm to a campus. As a result of that, and looking at other districts' best practices and all our feedback from the community, we're recommending that weapons possession be a level five. It is important to note that because an offense might fall in a specific category, and there are responses listed to it, it does not preclude the administrator in the building from using a, perhaps a lower-level response. So, if you will, if a student was in trouble for cheating, and it might have been a minor case of cheating, and the administrator worked with the student, the teacher, worked with the parent, and realized that this was a one-time small affair, they might choose to use a level one response instead of a level two response. This is what allows us to maintain some flexibility and relationship-building with our students. Under the essential information section, we had to update our bullying and harassment policy to be consistent with Board Policy 4.14, which was updated on 10/6/20, well after we went through our normal cycle of board approval of the code of conduct. So, simply that just reflects this fall update from the board action on the 6th of October. Our driver's license section for our secondary students was updated to be more explicit and aligned with the state statute that governs it. And under our public health section, we have added hotlines for students and individuals who are in crisis. A new section inside of the essential information is our scholarship section. These are lists of scholarships that are federal, state, and local in nature, and are available to K-12 students, most notably our HOPE Scholarship, which is expected, required by statute, to be in our code of conduct. And this is our opportunity to not only reflect that, but to give the opportunity for individuals to be aware of those other scholarships that might be available to students based on need. Mentioned earlier, we were looking forward. As we were studying the other large districts and the surrounding districts, we did come across Miami-Dade County Schools has a three-year document, and that is something that was favorably received by the individual groups that we presented to. We are not at this time prepared to say we want to do that right now. What we are looking for is your feedback and guidance, is this something you would be interested in doing, or would you prefer to maintain the annual presentation of the code of conduct? One of the things that guides this thought is also the Jeffrey Johnson Stand Up for All Students Act, which requires a review and update, similar to what we're doing right now with the code of conduct, every three years. That was done last year, so it would be an opportunity to synchronize the Jeffrey Johnson bullying and harassment policy, along with the code of conduct, if that was something the board was interested in doing. The other idea was one single code of conduct instead of the two. Of the 14 districts we looked at, 11 of them have a single code of conduct. Interesting to note that Miami-Dade does maintain two codes of conduct. I say that to emphasize the fact that these are not joined-together proposals or recommendations. They are standalone, they could be both, they could be neither. It's really what the guidance, one of the hopes for guidance that you would all provide this evening. However, it is important to note that there are some things that are incomplete in the code of conduct, namely, our table of contents doesn't have page numbers, because we need to be able to work with branding once board approval is achieved. So, we would ask that you excuse and give us the same latitude you have in the past, not to put the page numbers in there until the branding and the recommendations are complete. It's a small matter, but one I think is important to note. And also, board approval also will trigger off our translations of the document into Spanish and Creole versions, which we've been doing for the last several years. With that, Mrs. Scott?
So, at this time... At this time, we would like to answer any of the questions you may have. We had a large discussion around changing from three levels to five levels, adding whistleblower information, the parent resource link, and the scholarship information. So, if there's any questions that our team can answer for you, Ms. Vaughn, please let us know.
Okay, who has questions, comments?
Ms. Dorn, thank you. Mr. Magan, can you please, several times when you were speaking, you spoke about state recommendation. Could you kind of share that information when you're stating that, so that other people can understand?
Are you talking about the Cessor information?
Yes, how, when we receive that, we must, you know...
The state identifies those 26 infractions for all counties, and so that is something that forms the core of our 45 infractions. The other 19 are local codes that have been developed historically through the years here in Lee County. However, when we have a student commit a Cessor offense, this is what they are tracking, what I was alluding to before. So, we are required to capture that in the form of our student referral. It is reported up through the schools to the district, where it is gathered together, and then forwarded to the state of Florida, and then they use that information at the state level. Here locally, we use it as well at the district level, and the schools use it as an opportunity to mitigate and reduce student misbehaviors in those certain areas. Those 26 violations are, again, broken over those four levels.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, Ms. Gittens, do you have a question?
No, I'm fine. You have more to present, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Mrs. Patrica, do you have a question?
So, questions on everything that's been covered up to this point? Okay, so, I think that my colleagues and the superintendent are well-aware of my grammar fanaticism, and as I look at changing language in the code of conduct to gender-neutral terms, I wonder whether we can do that and still be in compliance grammatically? So, for example, page 94, technology use, says, "The student takes full responsibility for their device." Could we simply say the students take full responsibility for their devices? Can we change the subject to make it match, please? It would make my head not explode when I go over this with my kids at the beginning of each year. I would assume Ms. Vaughn would share that. So, if we can just make that grammatically compliant, I'd really appreciate it. The whistleblower policy, as I read the policy, Attorney Dupree Bruno, it is for employees. So, I'm not clear on why we're including a policy for employees in the student code of conduct. It begs the question, do we need to change the policy to make the whistleblower hotline available to students and members of the public? I'm not clear on why we're including an employee thing in here.
Anyone can call the whistleblower hotline. So, I don't know if that was the intent of staff to, that's why it was in there, but anyone can call, doesn't matter, doesn't have to be an employee. The protection is for the employee.
Okay.
It was brought up by one of the input groups, and so, when it was mentioned as an example of what else to possibly include in the introduction section, the subsequent meetings did endorse it, and so that's why it's just a recommendation at this time.
So, I guess, could I ask Attorney Dupree Bruno, if you could look at the language of policy and determine whether it needs to change to include it being available? I understand the protection is for employees, but I think the policy says that the whistleblower hotline is there for employees who want to report, so if you could take a look at that language, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
When I first joined the board, I had an issue with the seriousness with which we treat cheating. I'm wondering whether, in the elementary code of conduct, it appears as if cheating could be a level two or a level three, but in the secondary code of conduct, it appears to just be a level two. And that feels like it's, it should be the opposite to me. Instances of cheating at secondary level should be treated far more seriously than at the elementary level. And may I ask, what is the maximum discipline that can be taken against a student who cheats?
It would be up to the school-based administrator. The student could receive a zero on the assignment if it's proven to be that they were cheating. Typically, it is an academic response to an academic misbehavior.
So...
They do have those other options available to them if they feel that perhaps a detention or a parent conference is appropriate as well.
So, a student can leave our school as a 17, 18-year-old and go to college, where expulsion is the maximum penalty? So, I just, I always get concerned that we're not preparing our students for the next level of education, and that, you know, academic integrity is really at the focus of what we do. Those are my comments so far, thank you.
Mrs. Giovinelli?
Thank you. I just have, Mr. Magan, I just have one question. Has anyone consulted juvenile, someone that handles juvenile criminals? Because I see that the battery is treated as a five, but I believe the law on robbery, and it's treated as a four. I believe a robbery is more, you know, what's the word I want to use? It's weighted heavier in court system than actual battery. So, has anybody consulted with any of the experts, juvenile experts, criminal juvenile experts?
What I can say is that the battery is considered a level, the most serious are level one by the Cessor, and robbery is considered a level two. That is from the state, so, but no, I have not, and I don't know if anybody else has contacted the juvenile justice system in regards to how that would apply to our student code of conduct. I would have to check into that for you.
Yeah, that would help me, I think, a little bit more on those. Thank you.
Okay, second round.
I know you mentioned the schedule somewhere, that you had gone to town halls and all the different things. Where are we in that state? Are we done with all of that at this point?
Yes, considering the timeline that we need in order to follow the three-step process, this meeting, the subsequent one, and then gearing towards the board approval, going back and continuing to get more feedback at this point, would just kind of cycle us right back to where we're at right now. So, we wanted to reserve the last input for the board itself.
What is our, what is your hard timeline?
Right now, I think a later slide will reflect that we have our next presentation scheduled right now for May 25th. So, any feedback that we have here, taking notes on it, we would go back and update the document, and have it about a week before then, I believe it's due into for board document publication, whatever it is, a week, about the 17th, I imagine, in May.
This may be a question for Attorney Bruno, but considering, when we set the process up and the timeline for it, not understanding the public interest, is there any possible potential for having any other town hall, so that the people that don't get to speak because it's so limited here, that we would have an opportunity for more people to speak at another town hall, a limited version? And I'm not trying to put more work on you, but I'm trying to look at where, you know, where can we meet in the middle, since there's, this is limited according to our statutes, and there's only so many people that can speak. So, I would like to ask the board to even consider that if we did a limited, maybe, you know, one in each district or whatever, I mean, one in each zone, limited time, and it would still follow our guidelines as far as how many people can speak, but it would get people... it would give people and more people an opportunity. And, and, and someone said this to me the other day, and it's true. We want to hear what the public is saying. It's going to come down to us voting. And it's going to come down to us, you know, listening to everyone, but voting our conscience based on listening to everyone. So, can I, do I make, it's not a voting meeting, so can I ask for a consensus if anyone has an appetite for doing some additional town halls, one in each zone, on a limited basis, just to give more people an opportunity to feel that they have had their voices heard?
Ms. Gittens, the only thing I would re- remind the board is that this will be coming back before the board on, uh, different dates. I don't have those dates in front of me.
Two more times.
Two more times before the board.
And I, I understand that, but when it comes back here, we're going to end up with the same people that have spoken, speaking again, and people in other areas that don't have the opportunity to come here not have their voices heard as well.
Board discussion. Comments? Can we talk about that again?
Yeah, we, we, we can, since it's been...
Ms. Jordan and then Ms. Fisher.
No, Mrs. Fisher.
She first? She have her hand up. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. In regard to that, I know that I have had literally several hundred emails and texts and phone calls. So, in this day and age when, uh, virtual contact is so easy, I would encourage people to continue to contact us that way, and we can tally our, um, information because a lot of it is, um, based on one school of thought or another. So I think that that is another way that the public is able to access us and let us know their opinions and still allow our staff to stay on their timeline so that the Code of Conduct can be ready for the beginning of the next school year.
Okay. Ms., okay, Ms. Jordan, did you have something? Oh, oh, I thought your hand was raised. Okay, Mrs. Patrica?
I don't think there's anything that prevents any of us from holding a town hall or a, uh, forum for members of our community, either in the area from which we're represented or elsewhere in the community. So I, I would invite Ms. Gittens, if you think that, that would be appropriate, um, in your district, go for it. And if anyone in my district wants me to do it, I'll do it. I don't think it has to be a board thing.
Yes? Okay. Ms. Morgan? I'd like to get back to the agenda, please. Is, anybody else have a comment before we move back? I think we have plenty of time to discuss this since this is a pre-briefing, and, uh, this might be something, um, that we can talk about when we have some additional time after some of these first changes are made, and then there are also virtual town halls as well. Okay, so let's move ahead with the presentation, please.
All right. At this time, we would like to address the equity poster, including misconceptions and recommendations moving forward. So first, the School District of Lee County does not have a specific LGBTQ curriculum. The district utilizes the Next Generation Sunshine State standards as well as the curriculum of other programs such as Advanced Placement, International Baccalaureate, Cambridge ACE, and others. Specific references to LGBTQ is included in the health curriculum concerning human sexuality and reproduction. Parents may opt their students out of this portion of the curriculum by completing a waiver requ- a waiver request. The description of this process is included in the Student Code of Conduct on page 14 of the Parents' Rights and Responsibilities. I say page 14 currently. We'll see where it winds up, uh, as we make revisions. Also, the School District of Lee County has not changed the designation of restrooms on our campuses. We maintain separate facilities for boys and girls. We maintain separate facilities for staff, and we also have single-use restrooms, uh, and we continue to provide those on all campuses. Likewise, the designation of boys' and girls' locker rooms and showers also remains unchanged. Schools do work with students requesting accommodations on an individual basis to find a location that is safe and secure for the student and for all students on a campus. The School District also recognizes that there are commu- community concerns particularly around two issues. One, athletics, and also the domain or the rights of parents. We want to address those tonight. For athletics, the School District of Lee County follows the guidelines of the Florida High School Athletics Association. As well, uh, we recognize that our parents have rights in the education of their children, and we recognize that the state of Florida has moved, uh, to pass a parent rights bill, and we'll talk about that again here in just a minute. We also, uh, know that the board has passed Policy 1.27, our nondiscrimination policy. With the passing of that policy, Lee joins, uh, with eight other districts in the state of Florida, uh, of the largest districts in the state of Florida, in protecting students based on sexual orientation, and joins seven others, uh, in protecting students based on gender identity. And those districts include Dade, Broward, Hillsborough, Orange, Palm Beach, Duval, Polk, Pinellas, and of course, Lee. With that, we also have examined the legal case trajectory and, uh, the direction under Title VII, particularly after the Bostic ruling, which was interpreted to include sex discrimination, interpreted sex discrimination to include LGBTQ. As well, we abide by Title IX and the Fourteenth Amendment in terms of providing equity for our students who are LGBTQ. In terms of case trajectory, Adams versus the School Board of St. John's County, uh, St. John's County was found to have discriminated against the student by placing a bathroom policy that required the student to use a bathroom consistent with his birth gender. At this time, we have put in place, uh, processes to make sure that we are in compliance with the law and that we also protect the integrity of our students and make sure that, uh, they are protected on campus and have a safe place, uh, at school. We also recognize that Lee County continues to diversify, and we recognize the diversity of opinions, even in this room tonight. We maintain that we will continue to work on behalf of the citizens of Lee County in maintaining a safe and supportive community in our schools that is productive for our students towards the outcomes which they are trying to reach. So, we bring forth and, uh, recognize that the, uh, poster that we have in place includes much guidance which will remain in place in this district. It's under the nondiscrimination policy. But we do recognize that we need to make revisions to the poster. We're recommending that it not be included in the 2122 Code of Conduct so that we can, uh, update it, uh, and/or, uh, create additional guidance and clarity. We want to make sure that we're also including, uh, more guidance around our nondiscrimination policy for all students and especially all students in those protected classes that are identified in, not in Policy 1.27. This will give us also time to update in terms of, uh, additional, uh, advancements in Title IX, current case law, Title VII, and, uh, other, other law. It will also give us the time to gather input from our stakeholders, our board members, our staff, students, parents, and our community. It will also give us time to study other Florida school districts and organizations. We know that the following districts have either a one-page guide similar to ours or more comprehensive guides. Alachua, Bravard, Broward, Collier, Duval, Indian River, Fernando, Hillsborough, Leon, Manatee, Martin, Miami-Dade, Monroe, Okeechobee, Orange, Palm Beach, Pasco, Pinellas, Sarasota, St. Lucy, and Volusia. To that end, we, uh, commit to the board to conduct that input, that research, and bring back recommendations for improved guidance concerning our LGBTQ students.
Can we do questions?
Looking forward, this, uh, was mentioned earlier today. Our timeline, as it's anticipated right now, is to have the briefing and first reading on May 25th, which would mean approximately a week earlier, we will be responsible to make sure that, uh, the updated, uh, Code of Conduct recommendations are available for your review on board docs by, uh, by about May 17th approximately. And then after that, the second public hearing and reading would be on, anticipated on June 8th, and with hopes of securing board approval for the Code of Conduct for the 2021, 2022 school year.
At this time, Ms. Vaughn, we would like to turn it over to the board members to answer any questions you have about this section.
Okay. Mrs. Gittens?
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, I have two questions there, kind of unrelated to each other, but I, I did want to ask about the out-of-school suspensions. And the question is, why are we including out-of-school suspension in Level Two for elementary students?
To begin with, there, there are a variety of offenses inside of there, and it could be in regards, without speaking about each and every one separately, uh, there are instances where a student might commit the same behavior infractions on a repeated time. I know that our elementary school, uh, principals use OSS as a last resort, um, but at the same time, did not think, uh, did not want to recommend that, uh, we take a tool out of their, um, bag, even though it is kind of drastic because for elementary school students, uh, depending on the offense and, and the context of the situation, the principal or administrator that's handling the situation might feel that an out-of-school suspension is warranted after working with the parent. I know that's kind of a general overview answer. It doesn't get down to the specifics.
Well, no, and, and I, I, I hear you. I, I understand you, and having worked in elementary school, yes, there are times that we need to do that. I'm just wondering, is it, is it differentiated by the lower grades and like, you know, from third to, to fifth? I, I just, I'm not sure how I really feel about OSS for Level Two for elementary schools, third grade and below. It just seems a little bit. But let me give the, the other part of the question. Um, and I know you don't probably have it tonight, but I'd like to get a breakdown of the ethnicity of elementary schools that were suspended this year based on, uh, this policy.
Okay.
And, um, I know, we, you know, we talk about programs to help students to bridge from not taking them out of school, and that OSS should be the last resort. But do we have any thoughts of any other programs for students that may be that troubled that they need to have OSS, but then, uh, you know, there's no parental person to watch them, and you're really just making the thing worse because they're sitting at home or somewhere unattended? And with elementary schools, a lot of times, and different demographics, the parents almost rely on school to know where their kids are being taken care of and safe during the day. And if they don't have that option because they're suspended, it just is a bad situation all around. So, uh, you can get the data to me later, but I am concerned about making sure that it's equitable.
And I think you're spot on, and I think our elementary principals and administrators would agree with you that, yes, it is, might be necessary in rare cases, but to, um, use it as leniently, uh, as...
Limited, yeah.
Limited as possible, thank you, because, um, there are certain situations, and this is where the relationship and the administrator knowing the student and the family and the dynamics of that would weigh in heavily as they make that individual situ- uh, call as opposed to the old progressive mess, there's where it was, oh, this is the third time you did it, you're going home type of thing.
Right, right. I mean, I know with, like, upper levels, we had the, the stopgap for, um, before they went to success academy, there was an in-between.
Right.
And I'm just wondering if we can't think about that because in the elementary levels especially, that academic achievement in those first, you know, K through third grade is so essential, and any time away from that is going to hurt them academically, and when they're not attaining academically, then the behavior gets worse as well.
Very true.
So, um, thank you for that. And then also, regarding the poster, um, I did mention to, um, the superintendent and others that I had, the Saturday after we had the last action meeting, I met with a group of about eight students, some high school, some, um, college, and some just working. And we spent three hours on a Zoom meeting going through the poster. And I believe that they have given you some of the notes, and I requested that you have an opportunity to meet with these students. And I want the audience to know that it was a very, very vast, uh, from one end of the spectrum to the other. There were students that were, some were gay, some were trans, some were, uh, very, um, you know, on the left or the right. They were all different kinds of students. But the one thing I want you all to know before you get an opportunity to speak is that, one of the things they said is sometimes adults can mess it up for everybody. And I'm just quoting what they said. They have suggestions, and one thing was, the poster, even though it is in the book of the, um, Student Code of Conduct, it is not a number in the policy. A policy has a line number, a letter or something. It's like A3, line 29. This was a resource, to my understanding, to the policy. And I remember in one of the meetings, um, it was stated that it was there to help not only our LGBTQ students, but everyone else to understand what the whole situation is. So, the students would like to share what they came up with, and for example, on the poster, they wanted to take out the word, you know, your gender identity. And it was the LGBTQ students that said, "We don't want to be singled out. We just want to be normal students. We want everyone to see us as students, not the gay student or the trans student, just students." And we have to give them that opportunity to do so. They talked about the restrooms, and there was a long discussion about that, and they said K through sixth grade, uh, should be allowed to, um, just use the, the nurses station. And seventh and up, and one of the students was saying, you know, "You don't just come to school one day and say, you know, 'I think I'm gay, so I'm going to go to this bathroom.'" And they laughed about it because they said, "No." And one student explained how there's a process that if you're going to do that, you have to fill out pa- am I right? Give me a, okay? You have to fill out paperwork. You have to speak to the counselors. You don't just one day come and have on a dress and say, you know, "This is what I am." So for parents thinking that it's just that simple, it's not. Um, and this is from students. The information in there about pronouns and those other types of things, they said, "As..." reference material. And the section that has title, is it Title IX?
I don't know.
Has to say, because it's Title IX information. But the things they suggested, when they talked about the section on pride, overall, they said, "Why do we need this? Why does it need to be there?" And they said the part about faculty and staff being empowered was a bit aggressive. It's from kids, from students, not kids, let's say. So overall, the dress, they said, especially like if you're at a school that has uniforms, everybody has to wear uniforms. And they looked at the dress code, and they said, "The dress code is the dress code. And if you wear skirt and a polo shirt, you still have to have it tucked in. If you wear pants, then you still have to have your polo tucked in."
Okay, is that-
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Gittens, are you offering this as-
I am offering, they were asking what comments, okay, ma'am, excuse me. They were asking what do we have to offer to add. I am offering what the students said. I did ask the attorney and others if I could have them present, but there were rules or whatever that they couldn't present tonight. So, they asked me to present for them in this section. So if the board is wanting me to stop, then please tell me.
No, I'm just wondering if you're offering this, what the students said, as your guidance to this, the staff?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just clarifying it.
That's what I was doing.
Reminding you of the 10-minute rule.
Okay, so I will move on. There are certain things, and we'll share it with you, and I would hope, I have the names of the students, and I would hope you would be able to meet with them to hear it from their mouths. And I, up on the screen, and I know we can't read it all, but one of the students that was in the group wrote the article for the newspaper at-
Cape.
At the Cape High. I really would suggest you all read it. The student was at the last meeting when you all, I don't say you all, but when people in the audience conducted themselves in a certain way. And I don't see my lighthouse, I guess somebody took it down. But I just want to remind you, go online, read this article. The young man that was here that said, "Just let, listen to your kids," and let him speak. And this article explains, from their eyes and their point of view, how they felt in that meeting with the conduct that was there. And my last statement is, is your behavior what you're teaching your students as a way to solve conflict? If you have someone that's way over here, and you're way over here, how do you get together? And part of it is, you listen. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? Ms. Morgan?
Well, I guess I'm a little confused. Were you asking for guidance from us on, did you have specific questions? I thought we had, you were looking for guidance, is that-
Any guidance on anything we presented is appreciated. I know we had that first checkpoint, and then there was some feedback that we've captured, and if there's anything at this point, or anything that like Mrs. Gittens thought about the stuff in regards to the out-of-school suspension for Level 2 offenses for elementary, if there's something else that might have come to mind.
I have no comments, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Jivinelli.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions that you didn't, Mr. Mangan, you didn't exactly say what the FSAA recommendation is, can you clarify that?
Florida High School?
Florida High School Association.
I defer to Mr. Bradley on that, to be honest with you.
And I can only give you a portion of it. Mr. LaRosa would be the person to contact as far as the exact guidance, but the Florida High School Athletic Association does have a process in place whereby a transgender student can request participation in the sport of the gender with which they identify. It goes through a process of review in front, with a panel, they must produce medical information, it is a thorough review, and a decision is rendered.
Right, so we don't actually determine that, it's done at that level?
Correct.
Thank you. My other question is regarding, okay, so when does the actual, what grade does the sex ed start? Like, what grade level is that? I've had parents ask me that. So when do they start educating?
I have to defer to one of our curriculum people.
If I may, through the chair, my children, and they're not that far away from this, it was fifth grade, and I was given the opportunity to off them out. And it was a very biological definitional, this is how biology works in the body type of education, and they actually went to FGCU to receive the instruction.
And then it's very specifically located in our ninth grade Hope and Health PE classes that are both located on our Lee Schools curriculum and instruction, there's a unit there that's very specific to that topic.
Thank you, because I know the community is interested in this. So also, so there was an issue with the Florida Equality poster that was put in the agenda last year, that nobody really was aware of it, including teachers, because I've spoken to many that did not know it was there, including myself, I admitted that. So, my concern is, I don't, you mentioned that that's being taken out, but what will be put in its place? That information wasn't provided again today, and I'm concerned that in next June, or August, or whatever, that there'll be something there that wasn't in the briefing again. So I want to make sure that that's avoided. So I would like to have that information spelled out completely, so that that's provided to all stakeholders, including myself. Also, I didn't see anything, no one discussed anything about the mask mandate, and I've had a lot of people mention that, so that was in the Code of Conduct, I believe, as well, right? The mask mandate? It's part of the, it's part of the dress code? That's been a question as well? And then this is actually a question for the superintendent. We're building all these new schools, are we building schools with bathrooms that are unisex? I mean, I think we need to be, if we're going to be progressive, let's be really progressive. And we need to be building schools that accommodate everyone. Thank you.
Superintendent doesn't mind, I'd just like to, the mask thing, the only guidance we have in there is what the board requested us last year after our first presentation, was in regards to the public health and safety, and the statement reads, "In the interest of public health and safety-"
Mr. Mangan, I cannot hear you.
Sorry. The only other thing that we put in there in regards to the board input from last year's cycle of a presentation was the section about public health and safety, and it was, reads, "In the interest of public health and safety, there may be a district endendum to the Student Code of Conduct based on recommendations from national or state organizations." We did not come back with any specific additions to the Code of Conduct in regards to students who have an issue with the mask mandate. So I do not have anything else in regards to mask-specific inside of here. And we did not add anything in regards to the code, to the dress code in regards to the mask specifically.
And Ms. Jivinelli, related to the policy issue, you know, we, I sent you a memorandum earlier that would, really me requesting to be provided additional flexibility as we move forward to the 21-22 school year, because right now, our board policy is very specific in terms of the guidance that we have to, the approval that we have to receive before we remove that mandate, but in light of Commissioner Corcoran's guidance, I believe that, you know, following the guidance of the Department of Education is something that we should certainly do, and in order to do that, we need to have flexibility in our policy. So I am asking that, at some point in the very near future, that we consider revising that, so that we have the flexibility as it relates to the mask mandate.
Okay, and then one more, my last question.
And then answering your question about the facilities, to my knowledge, you know, we build to the prototypes, so the prototypes are still the same as they are. There are areas in our buildings that do offer independent standalone restrooms where they can work with a parent and a student, you know, that's something that would continue.
Yeah, I think we really need to talk about that. We're building a lot of new schools, and we need to be a little more accommodating. The other question that I have, that I sent an email a couple of weeks ago after this last meeting, was regarding last year, in August or September, the Code of Conduct was digitally sent to people, and I was concerned on, we should know how many people, I've spoken to so many people that I was unaware that it was there, that they did not even sign off on it. Do we have the number of, of how many parents and students received it and actually signed off that they did read that?
My understanding is staff is working on getting you that number.
Okay.
So I don't have it in front of me now.
Okay.
Okay, board members, who else hasn't spoken this round, and Mrs. Fisher?
Yes, thank you. So at this time, I would like to save my comments for board comments and hear the public comment, because that will help me in my decision-making.
Well, we do have public comment time, of course, Ms. Fisher, and we're not there yet.
Okay.
But we will be hearing everybody, we will be hearing from everyone. Okay, Mrs. Jordan?
Okay, I know that you had asked about the annual versus three years, and I would prefer the annual, only because of the fact that we do have changes that come up, and we want to make sure that we are adhering to what those are. And then I did have a question too, because I know Ms. Jivinelli brought it up about the prototype. Do we not get our prototypes from the state? Is that, I thought that's where Ms. Eball said that our prototypes for the build-outs for the new schools come from the state. So that would be something I would like to find out, if the state is telling us how to build the schools.
And just to answer that, that prototype is something that we designed, and for example, if you look at the high school, I think that one goes literally back to Ida S. Baker High School, so that is our high school prototype that we continue. Clear through to Gateway High School is a very similar design. We do make tweaks and changes, it's continuing to be revised moving forward, but the basic layout of those buildings remains the same. So if you go walk in Ida S. Baker, and you go walk in Gateway High School, you will see a very similar layout for those buildings.
Okay, and then it goes to the state and gets approved, and then it comes back to us?
It is approved at the state level, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my other comment would be, the reference to the Equality Florida, that's just something that's really driving me crazy, because that has been, it's been over a year ago, 2019, when that was being spoken about. Policy 1.27 was our nondiscrimination, and I know that that was spoken about multiple, multiple times, making sure that we had every, all the proper verbiage in there, and everything was what it needed to be. And I believe that that, one sheet paper, poster, went in there to, as a reference to strengthen the 1.27, not to hurt anybody, to just to secure and ensure that every child, no matter who you are, would come to school and be safe, and have a great learning environment. That's what that was about. It wasn't to offend anybody, or anything like that, and I can honestly say that, shame on me, because I should have read every single detail, perhaps, but I know that it was brought before us, and I thank you, because you always do come here to us, and you always do share the information to us multiple times. So I want to thank you for that, and just to say that, you know, we do have policy in place, we're not taking, just because we don't have a poster in there, does not mean that we're not going to make sure that, you know, we follow, you know, Title VII, Title IX, that, you know, our policy for nondiscrimination, which protects all of us, all of you, all the children in this district and staff, and we want to make sure that we understand that that still will take place. So I thank you for bringing this before us.
Okay, who else has a comment or a question, or feedback? Yes, Mrs. Gittens?
I have a question, based on what Ms. Jivinelli was saying about the parents before, pre-COVID or PC, any teachers out there know that, you know, the forms had to go home, they had to be signed and came back, and I won't even ask how many parents actually looked at what you signed, but your child said, "If we don't, we won't get a popsicle party." So you signed it. But did you read it? And did you look at it? And then my question is, now that we were digital, how did that affect even more so? Because we've talked about the digital divide, for one, and not all parents can just go in their office in their house and pull it up and sit there and read the Code of Conduct. So since it was digital, and I'm not sure, how did we do it digital? Did they have to go on the portal and check it off, or what did they do?
Essentially, that would be it, and when they would access the parent portal or set up an account, it would be asking them to acknowledge the reading and understanding of the Code of Conduct.
Mr. Mangan, please make sure you speak-
I'm sorry. Yes, essentially, what you were talking about is a basic description of it, the focus parent portal was set up to prompt the parents to look at the Code of Conduct, and then to acknowledge it through an electronic sign-off sheet.
And how, and if, you know, it's a kind of rhetorical that you don't have to answer right now, but how did we look at the parents that did not have that opportunity? Are there more parents this time, just because we did it digitally, it's hard to say with a mask, that didn't do it? And I know you're going to get the numbers to show us, but I have a feeling it's going to be a lot lower than just reaching over and signing, but I say to parents, "Read what you signed."
Mrs. Patrica?
I have a lot of questions, so you can cut me off and come back to me after everybody's had a second chance, if you'd like, Madam Chair. My first question, I don't know Attorney Dupree Bruno if I should bring this up during good of the order, because it was not presented as part of the Student Code of Conduct, but at our March 22nd workshop, we were presented forms that students are permitted to sign. Is that an appropriate topic for now, or should I do that during good of the order?
If Mr. Mangan or Mr. Bradley can answer the question, they may be able to.
Okay, so at that March 22nd meeting, you showed us forms that students are permitted to sign, to ask the school to treat them with regard to use of pronouns and names with the gender with which they identify, but there was no signature line for parents. Are we removing those as well? And if we're not removing them, are we adding a parental signature line?
So at this time, we, that particular form is a counselor form to use with the student in setting up a plan.
Point of order, please. Point of order, please, he's going to answer the question, just be patient. Mr. Bradley, if you can speak a little louder, please.
So at this time, the form that you're referencing is a gender support plan. It is intended to be a plan with the school, the parent, and the student, in terms of how to support that student on the campus, and make sure that they have full access to their education. There are no signature lines on the document at all. It is merely a document that outlines what is going to happen for the student. There are action steps that are listed at the bottom for each of the parties, if they indicate certain action steps.
I recall there being a line for a student and somebody from the school, but no line for the parent. That was on both the forms, both the one that was provided by an organization and the one provided by the School District of Lee County.
So the one that you're referring to that is from Lee County is the request to have the gender-affirming name appear in certain district applications, and that has been amended with a parent signature line, and so it includes a place for student, counselor, or equity coordinator, and parent to sign that form.
Okay, so can I now feel confident as a parent that if, if a school is going to refer to or treat my child as a gender with which they identify, which does not match their biological birth sex, that I, as a parent, will be notified before the school takes those actions?
So, as I've, we've stated before, it is the- So as we've stated before, it is the full intent of the district to encourage that there is a loving, supporting, trusting relationship between parent and student.
Ms. Patrika, the other thing I would add to that, too, is that there is the Parents' Bill of Rights that most likely, well, it's passed, we're waiting for the governor to sign it. So upon that, I know that the district will review all of its processes to make sure that we are in compliance with this new legislation.
I understand that, but my comfort level doesn't exist. I understand, I understand that if a child goes to a counselor, or a teacher, or an administrator, they are going to do everything they can to engage the parent. But in the event the child doesn't want to engage the parent, what are we doing about protecting parental rights? And without parental signature and parental notification, I don't believe parental rights are being protected. I don't know how you can, no, no. I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how you can, we can do anything as a school district that doesn't allow for parental permission, notification, and participation.
I don't know if I'm prepared to provide a full response for you this evening. We can certainly take that. I do think that's going to need input from your board attorney as well as our staff attorneys. So we'll be happy to bring a response back.
Again, Ms. Patrika, I do think that this new Parents' Bill of Rights has some provisions in there that will require the district to reevaluate certain things and make sure that we are in compliance. So there are some provisions that I know will be impactful.
Okay, so I will get a definitive answer at some point in the relatively near future. Okay, may I go on? So my next question is, at the March 22 briefing, I specifically asked, my daughter is a swimmer and she uses locker rooms to change for swim practice and for swim meets. And if a biological boy who identifies as a girl wants to use the locker room that she is using, and she feels uncomfortable with that, I was told that she would have to find someplace else to go. That is different, that is different from what I heard you say tonight. What I heard you say tonight is that students who are transgender will be provided with a gender-neutral facility.
Well, first, I want to clarify, I did not say that particular statement you just attributed to me. I said that we do provide accommodations for any student that requests a private changing area upon request. So with our transgender students, we do work with the student on an individual basis to find the most appropriate facility for them in terms of changing rooms, and that happens case by case depending on the facility.
Okay, I would urge you to go back and watch the March 22 meeting because I've watched it a couple of times and I remember being stunned by your answer. So I can feel confident now that my sons will be changing in a locker room with other biological boys, and my daughter will be changing in a locker room with other biological girls. Is that a fair assessment?
At this time, that is a fair assessment, but we do work for equity for our students who are transgender to make sure that they have an equitable changing room.
Madam Chair, if I may please just remind the audience, just if you could just hold it together, we're going to get through this. These are important questions that the board members want answers to in order for them to do their job. And I'll, if Mr. Mangan and Mr. Bradley, if you can speak a little louder because people in the back are having some difficulty, but I would ask you to, no booing, no hissing, no clapping, no comments, so that we can get through this process and the board can do their job. Thank you very much.
I have asked you before if you have a law degree because you're really good at answering questions without really answering them. So I'm not, I don't mean that as an insult, I really don't. You know that I meant that as a compliment the first time I said it, and I mean it as a compliment now. My question, I guess, is do we need a policy surrounding bathroom and locker room use? Because as I read Adams, I see that they passed a policy in a reactionary fashion which hurt them in court. And if we were to adopt a policy that's very clear, then no parent, no student, no stakeholder will have any question as to how these issues are being treated in our schools. So that's, would be my question and guidance, I guess.
I think that as we wait for the session to be finished and we get all of the new laws that are coming in, we will be able to assess and draft the appropriate policies. Remember that Adams, we're still waiting to see if there's going to be any new developments from the case law perspective because they're still waiting for the Omba. We'll see what happens with that. But again, as the session ends and we get the new laws, we will address and draft the appropriate policies.
I will say that Adams specifically addressed restrooms and also specifically did not and specifically stated that they were not addressing locker rooms. So I think that we're pretty in the clear in terms of the law. Now, what would happen if, what is the risk to the district if we adopt a policy that is not in line with the holding in Adams? What's the risk to the district in that?
I'm not sure I understand the question. What do you mean by what's the risk if we don't follow? I mean, right now, Adams is.
Was the exposure, looking at the federal government bringing in the.
So right now.
And making us allow, you know, that's what I mean by what's the risk.
So Adams, right now, is controlling in the 11th Circuit, which is our circuit in Florida, so we are obligated to follow Adams. The best thing that we can do is to make sure that we have the policies in place that are in line with the ruling in Adams with regards to the bathroom. That's all we can do. I mean, that is the law in Florida at this time until we hear something further either from the courts that are reviewing for Omba, or if the Supreme Court jumps in to make a ruling.
Okay, may I continue?
We're at the 10 minutes, Ms. Patrika, so anybody else on the board have any follow-ups to that? I do want to ask a question that was actually, something that was mentioned earlier. The recommendation then is to take the poster out of the booklet, but I think somebody else on the dais, I can't remember who, asked, well, what is going to replace that? I mean, we have other documents and with the red lines and the crossouts and all of that, but after the slash through the poster, I didn't see alternate language. And I was wondering about that. Where has that been drafted, the alternate language for removing the poster?
So as we presented this evening, we would like the opportunity to review where our current law stands, and especially in light of the fact that the new Parents' Rights Bill was passed in the state of Florida, as well as we know that the federal government is working on further guidance on Title IX. And we'd like to get the community and stakeholder input that we talked about before coming back with a revision. So the recommendation was not to include the poster directly in the student Code of Conduct this year, instead to look at creating a clearer, better guidance policy, or, I don't use the wrong word there, but guidance resource that helps to clarify our policy of nondiscrimination and its enactment for students who are LGBTQ.
Okay, for my part, it would have been very helpful to have seen when you eliminate the poster, what language you would have that would stand in for that omission. Because I personally feel that we need to, even though we have policy, nondiscrimination policy, that we need to reinforce that although we want, we want all of our children to feel safe and we want all of our children to feel respected. And I don't know that any of us, well, there may be some people in here, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I know as a parent, a grandparent, I would feel, as an individual, I would feel very uncomfortable sharing facilities with someone biologically of the opposite sex. Now, I think this takes on different dimensions when you talk about older transgender individuals because typically, our students would not have any of the surgeries associated with a complete transition. So it's, you know, even if, from a classroom perspective, let's say, one might look at an individual in the class and it wouldn't be a problem for a biological girl to have transitioned to being male, but on, and I'm trying to use the correct words here, but in restroom situations, locker room situations, that probably wouldn't be the case for our students, or maybe it might be a rare case for some of our students who may be 18 or so years old. So I really would have appreciated to see, because it's a month from now that we are going to have our first reading, and I want to have plenty of time for myself and to hear again from the community as they look at the alternate language that has come in to the Code of Conduct to replace the poster, to see if it's more palpable to people and more understandable. So that's my comment on this. Now, are you gentlemen presenting on other parts of this, this evening, that are posted on board docs? Or is this?
The board doc should have the, what we call the red line, which you were referring before.
Right.
And then a, what we're referring to as a ready-for-branding without the red line. Obviously, it's not ready-for-branding, it's just a way to distinguish it. And then the PowerPoint that was shared tonight, that's all we have for this evening.
Yeah, I just wanted, because whichever comes, whichever comes first, break after you all are done, or by 8:00, we're going to take a brief recess. So I don't want to cut anything that you're doing short, so.
We are reached the end of our presentation for the board this evening.
Okay, and for everybody in the audience, of course, there's a lot more information on board docs that you can look at and that we encourage you to look at. Okay, so final comments before we close this out. Final comments from board members, and then we will.
Madam Chair.
Take a break, yes.
If I could just explain something, I'm not sure if I was very clear originally when the question was asked. When we have a law, the exposure that the district has is that somebody claims that we violated the law. So these laws that we're talking about fall under what we call Title IX, and these laws protect individuals from discrimination. So if somebody feels that they have been discriminated against, be it because of their race, or their gender identity, or anything along those lines, one of those suspect classes, it exposes the district to a lawsuit where, you know, obviously, money and all of those things fall in line. So that's what the exposure is, okay?
Okay, so before we close out this excellent summary of the Code of Conduct, final comments, questions, Mrs. Jivinelli?
I just have two, actually. I had, something you said made me want to ask this question. Can you give me example of a gender-neutral changing area? What would that be?
We're talking about a private changing area.
Okay.
That would be provided to a student who requests an accommodation, and that is provided to that student.
Okay. And then also, who actually approved the poster to be put into the classrooms throughout the district? Because I hear they're even in elementary schools. So I don't know who approved that, so I was just curious.
I don't know the answer to that. The posters were a part, were a resource that was provided as a support for our nondiscrimination policy 1.27.
Speaker, please.
The poster was provided as a resource for support of our nondiscrimination policy 1.27.
But wouldn't that, I mean, shouldn't that have gone to as a board approval?
It did.
I mean.
I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Okay, can, either Dr. Atkins or Attorney DePree Bruno, can you answer that?
Whether or not it should have come to the board?
Right.
So I, my understanding that it was in the Code of Conduct that the board had reviewed in various briefings and then eventually voted on.
Yes.
That's my understanding.
I think Mrs. Jivinelli, though, is asking about the actual posters that were distributed to schools. Is that not correct, Mrs. Jivinelli?
Right, because the first time I saw that poster was in October, so it was already in the classrooms, I guess.
So this issue has come up, and this is why we have had the workshop and this is, you know, this topic keeps coming up to make sure that the board is aware, because the board is supposed to be aware about the different policies and the directions that the district is moving. So yes, this does need to come before the board, and it has, and it will continue to come.
Okay. Mrs. Jivinelli, did you have anything else?
That's it, that was my two questions, thank you. One couldn't be answered, and I got an answer.
Ms. Morgan, Ms. Gittens?
I mean, I'll just say that the first time, too, that I actually saw the poster was in October with the, and I know it was in there, and I said earlier that the statement was made that there would be a resource to help our LGBTQ students. And since, to me, since it was not a, you know, line 39 of policy, you know, 3A, it was not, it was a resource. That could have very easily been just the URL at the end if someone wanted to find out more information. So, and I think Ms. Fisher provided us with some copies of it after that because we hadn't seen it, but.
I got it.
Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
There's no questioning of the board when they are doing, conducting their business. You will have time during public comments to make your comments, I promise, it's coming. But right now, they need to be able to do their work.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so in October of 2020, I was the chair, and that was in the Code of Conduct. We did vote on it unanimously. And when they were finished being printed, along with the stickers, they were handed to me as the chair, and I passed them out to all of you, my colleagues. So I'm, I don't know what else I can say.
Ms. Morgan? Okay. Ms. Jordan, did you have any final comments?
I do not.
Okay, Ms. Patrika?
Ms. Morgan, has her hand up? Sorry. Yeah, and since you brought it up, Ms. Fisher, I will say that at that, at that meeting, we agreed that there would be no Equality Florida labels on things. We agreed that we would use our own materials and eliminate the Equality Florida because we didn't want to be associated with a nonprofit that has an advocacy arm associated with it. But that was, so I don't understand why these things are in the school either. They probably went out before the board had the conversation, but I think we need to revisit how we disseminate promotional materials provided by other organizations in our schools.
Can I just say, too, I know that we did, I agree with Ms. Morgan on that, we did have that discussion because we were at an impasse about the resolution. And I tried several times to have us address it close to that time, but we did not get it on the agenda until, what, March? I think we met about the whole issue. So I just wanted to, you know, put that out there, we did discuss that.
Okay, Ms. Fisher, you had another comment?
No, I'm going to reserve it for later.
Okay. Everybody's, okay, Ms. Patrika?
So I guess in terms of the law on this, I'd like us to focus on the arguments that St. John's County failed to make. I believe that there are. I believe that there are a lot of constitutional arguments that can be made to support having facilities where children don't, they're protected against exposing themselves to other students who don't match their biological parts, and being exposed to those, those things. I think there are a lot of constitutional arguments that can be made in support of a policy that will allow for separate facilities and accommodations to be made for any student that feels uncomfortable using a facility that matches their gender identity. I don't think it has to be specific to transgender students. I think if we open it up to any student that feels uncomfortable using a specific facility, then that overcomes some of the constitutional challenges in Adams. I also think that we should look at the dissent in Adams, because I think it provides us a roadmap for those exact constitutional arguments we would need to make. And the last thing I will say is, the reliance on Bostock continues to be very concerning to me, because we are predicting what the United States Supreme Court will do based on Bostock, which is a completely different law, and the dissent in Bostock now comprises the majority of the Supreme Court. The majority of the Supreme Court, with the exception of maybe Roberts, they are strict constructionists, and they will not define the term gender or sex to be anything other than what was contemplated by the legislature at the time that law was passed. So I'd like us to take a view of legal trends with the reality of what the United States Supreme Court is actually likely to do.
So, we will, thank you, Board Member Patrica. So we'll take a look at that when we discuss the policies, as well as look at what the, what the laws are after the session. I will say that there is a case, the Grimm versus Gloucester case, Gloucester County School Board, from August 20th, 2020. Remember, all of these cases came out at the same time last summer. That case is pending to see if the Supreme Court is actually going to hear it.
The United States Supreme.
The United States Supreme Court, and if they hear it, then that's definitely going to tell us exactly which way the court's going to go, because that case is very similar to Adams, it's not within our circuit. However, we have to watch that to see what the US Supreme Court's going to do.
Yeah, that's not even in the federal system, that's Massachusetts State Court case, right?
No, that is a Fourth Circuit case, Fourth Circuit.
It must have originated in state court.
Yes.
All right, those are my comments for now, thank you.
All right, so.
Ms. Vaughn, just one thing real quick. One, we'll, we'll get you an answer to your question about, you know, how that, how that got to schools. My understanding was provided to the schools, but in terms of permission, I'll, I'll get you an answer for that. The second thing, the question that Ms. Jivinelli had earlier regarding the Code of Conduct and the number of forms that were signed, et cetera, that was provided, I believe, in an email to you this afternoon. So, you did have, I believe, off the top of my head, like 40%, but then they followed up with paper copies, so it's a higher percentage than that. But anyway, it is, that information has been provided to you, and we are in compliant, compliance with the law as it relates to the Code of Conduct and notification. But if you have any other questions after you see that and read that, just let us know what they are.
Okay, thank you for that update, Dr. Atkins. All right, so, I would like to thank our.
Oh, I just, I'm sorry, I just haven't seen. One more thing. I know everybody keeps saying LGBTQ. This best practices went in there for equity and equality for all students. Every child in our district, not just one certain gender, and I will tell you, the EDAC worked on this for months for policy 1.27 to make sure that everybody was included in this policy, whether you were Jewish descent, no matter who you were, we wanted to make sure nobody was left out of this conversation or the protection. So, I just want to make sure that, and I think because of the fact that it is Equality Florida, and the, the map is in rainbow colors, so the assumption is, of course, one way or another, but it is the best practices that it was to strengthen up equality and equity for all, for all. I just had to say that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
Okay, I'm looking, anything else? All right, I would like to thank Ms. Scott, Mr. Bradley, and Mr. Mangan for enlightening us on this. We are going to take a seven-minute break, it is 7:51, and when we come back, it will be time for public comment.
Amen.
Okay, seven minutes.
All right, we are now reconvening and we have reached that point in the meeting where we welcome public comment. Attorney Dupree Bruno, would you please read the guidelines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the Board concerning this meeting's agenda, which is the Student Code of Conduct. Comments are limited to this topic as it is the only item on the agenda per Board Policy 1.11 subsection 5(c)(1). If you decide to go off on a tangent and talk about a different topic, I will give you a warning. If you continue to talk about a different topic, the microphone will be shut down. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided at the back of the room. If you need a blue card, they are located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted and public comment will be made in the central microphone in the back. Please be advised that the Board does not respond during public comment to the remarks made by the speakers. At the end of public comment, the Board Vice Chair Ms. Vaughn will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns to the Superintendent. Board Policy 1.81 is in effect and requires everyone to wear a mask. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. We do have students here with us today, so I ask you to please be very careful and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. And I will tell you if there is a personal attack or abusive language. In addition, clapping, hissing, booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or a display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 1.11 and they may be removed from the chambers. Everyone has a right to speak and the Board wants to hear from you. Again, we have young people, students, here with us today. They need to feel safe and have the right to express their opinions. Please be respectful of each other and allow every speaker to have their opportunity. Per Board Policy 1.11, because we have thirty-one speakers or more, each speaker will be allowed one minute. The maximum time allowed for public comment is one hour. You will find the countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. We encourage you to address the Board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective body. Please state your name prior to making your comment. I'm going to call five speakers at a time. You will line up in the back. Please follow the staff's instruction when lining up. Madam Chair, I have an excess of sixty speakers that wish to address the Board this evening.
Okay, so at this time, we will not ask for additional speakers because of our policy. So, Speaker number one, if you will.
I'll go ahead and start calling them.
Use your cell.
Kathy Horn, Nancy Terary, Robert Roper, Danielle Hagman, Arlene Goldberg, please line You may go ahead and speak, thank you.
I'm Kathy Horn from Astero. Thank you for your comprehensive progressive LGBTQ+ policies which lead the state. Don't let hostile homophobia reverse your admirable standards. The angry aggressive comments of some people in the last meeting were horrifying yet also illuminating. A gay student was harassed by adults yet bravely spoke of today's reality, which is that while students support their LGBTQ peers, too many adults with ill-informed and fearful biases endanger their well-being. I hope that crowd taught each of you exactly why LGBTQ people need a safe space at school. You must be as brave as your students, maintain your proactive policies, and use this opportunity to educate the public. Please leave all Equity information in your Code of Conduct as you conduct your research. To remove it would be to betray your LGBTQ students. Thanks to that last meeting and tonight's behavior as well, you know what an unsafe space feels like. Keep safe, keep schools safe spaces.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Nancy Terary. I'm the current President of the Lee County Chapter of the National Organization for Women. I speak on behalf of myself and our local organization tonight. I want to thank the Board for its efforts and the school district in terms of putting in place positive policies to protect our, all of our students, including our LGBTQ students. I'm a little alarmed tonight by some of the discussion. I feel like we're starting to go backwards now and that would be a terrible thing. I have two asks tonight. One is that all of us in this room educate ourselves better. We're speaking, many people are speaking from fear rather than truth, rather than facts. And I really think that our students deserve better. My second ask is that the Board please not just throw out the poster.
Next speaker. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
My name's Robert Roper. This poster signifies a safe space for the LGBTQ student, yet the full policy written on this poster is for, and I quote, "Race, color, ethnicity, pregnancy, disability, religion." The list goes on farther than I can read in one minute. They all have one thing in common: they're afforded no special accommodations. Yet sexual orientation, gender identification, gender expression enjoys special accommodations. The only fair action is one that accommodates all students equally. The schools of Lee County should serve as a space, safe space for all students, not just a segment of the population that's disproportionately represented by a political organization called Equality Florida. Please end this unhealthy relationship with Equality Florida and remove all references to LGBTQ policies which are absolutely offensive terms to many people of faith.
Will the following individuals please line up? Anne Reed, Abigail Reed, Sen Tomkins, Tim Doos, and Sean Williams. Next speaker, please.
My name is Danielle and I'm working in conjunction with Equality Florida. There are currently two thousand two hundred and twenty-seven high schools in the state of Florida and two-point-seven million students are enrolled in our state schools. In two thousand nineteen, a youth risk behavior survey was conducted with the CDC and they found that eighteen-point-two percent of Florida high school students identified as LGBTQ, as well as one-point-five to upwards of three-point-three percent of students identifying as transgender. Just like last time, there are an awful lot of people here tonight, many of whom have their heads in the sand. These are children that are being attacked and the seeds of intolerance that you are sowing in your homes can almost a hundred percent guarantee your children will not come to you if they're struggling. It's also probably safe to assume you have no idea what their opinions are about who is using the stall next to them. Forcing kids who are already in transition to use a completely separate facility is painting targets on the back of these humans. Your bigotry that you're disguising as good intentions will either make or break your child or.
Ma'am, next speaker, please.
My name is Arlene Goldberg and in two thousand twenty, the Eleventh Circuit Court of Appeals held that a school board policy that prohibited a transgender student from accessing the restroom consistent with their gender identity constituted sex discrimination in violation of the Title IX of the Educational Amendments of nineteen-seventy-two and the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. This ruling applies to all of Florida. During this appeals process, there was no evidence of any incidents within Florida, nor the entire United States, that demonstrate that allowing transgender students to use the restrooms consistent with their gender identity compromises other students' privacy or safety.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Anne Reed and I'm a parent of two current Lee County School District students and one alumni. I am also a member of the Equity and Diversity Advisory Committee for the Lee County School District and I was a volunteer co-advisor for Astero High School's GSA. Now is the time to stop listening to the adults and start listening to our LGBTQ-plus students. Policies and procedures, including what is and is not included in the Code of Conduct, should absolutely have their input. Currently, adults are the ones in the room with only a very small number of those adults having any experience with or being part of the LGBTQ-plus community. Students know what they need and how best they can be supported by the district. I call on the school board to create a committee of students similar to EDAC. I also call on the school district personnel to find a way to listen to LGBTQ-plus students and get their input on policies, staff training, and things that can actually help them. I agree with Board Member Giddens in the Code of Conduct presentation and commend the Board for listening to us today.
My name is Abigail Reed and I'm a past student. I will be reading a letter from past and present students of Lee County. Dear Lee County School Board Members, we, the current and past students of Lee County from elementary to collegiate level, ask the district to continue to support LGBTQ youth. We recognize the importance of voice of students in creating the Code of Conduct. It is time for the Lee County School Board members to show their support for LGBTQ youth. For this reason, we call for the creation of an LGBTQ student advisory committee. Such a committee would advise the Board on LGBTQ issues and the Student Code of Conduct, ensuring they have received testimony from the students within their district. We believe that the school board needs to remember their students and how their actions affect us. We call for this committee to form a direct line of contact between students and board members. Sincerely, one hundred and thirty-one past and present students of Lee County. Thank you.
Sen Tomkins, Vice President, Lee County, LGBTQ Democratic Caucus, Member, Lee County, Black Democratic Caucus, pronouns, he, his, him. My mother informed me over the weekend of how to transform anger from what I've been hearing here into something better. So I'm going to tell you about this beautiful ninety-year-old woman of Irish, German, Bohemian, and Dutch descent who dared marry a black man in the nineteen-fifties when it was illegal to do so. And I'm sure there are people in this room who still don't like that and I don't care. She said, "Never let hate change the goodness of who you are." She also said, "And if they come for your children, fight with the roar of a lion and don't back down."
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Misty Bruckner, Crystal Seison, Deborah Hopkins, Devon Cranford, Maddy Royzel. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tim Doos. I'm a longtime LGBT citizen of Lee County. I and many of my friends, when we were younger in elementary school and in high school, we were bullied to no end and there was no provisions for our support. Even one of my friends committed suicide because of the bullying. I finally got out of high school, went to college, and became an Air Force civilian for thirty years. And I watched the military handle LGBT issues safely and even in today's environment, LGBT personnel in the military are taken care of, but not in Lee County. I am here to support the current Lee County LGBT best practices, the Student Code of Conduct, and I would like to see the poster included in the.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello and thank you, Board, for this opportunity to speak. I'm here as a straight woman representing the LGBTQ community because since the sixties, we've been fighting for these rights. I've been fighting for these rights, not only those but those of the entire movement. And I want everyone here who's LGBTQ and especially your children, all of you, to please listen to your children. They are more progressive than us in their mindset. They are more accepting and they are more loving. So please, don't let this be something that just adults are discussing. You need to talk to your children and, Board, you need to talk to the students.
Ma'am, can you please state your name?
My name is Deborah Hopkins, activist.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And don't forget to state your name when you come to the microphone, please.
My name is Crystal Sizcon. Currently, one-third of Florida school districts are using this Best Policy Practice poster. That is twenty-two schools. It has become the standard moving forward. To remove this poster now after it has already been put into place and while it is being used as the standard would have a very negative impact on LGBTQ-plus students and staff here in Lee County. There was no problem here. There is no problem here until outside agitators created a false narrative. If you came to this, are you not then the same? Are you not using our most vulnerable population to appease the mob? You were elected to be the leaders and you represent all of our voices. Under Title IX, schools must provide equal access to educational opportunities and activities, even in circumstances where others, including students, parents, or community raise concerns. A school's interest in providing privacy for its students or another parent's discomfort with transgender students in the restroom do not relieve schools of the obligation to provide all students access to the restroom and facilities consistent with their gender identity. Keep the poster in, Board.
Will the following individuals line up? Alden Joseph Rivas, Jason Beckman, A.J. Ford, Katie Ireland, Dylan Jefama. Next speaker, please.
My name is Misty Bruckner. I'm actually the mother of a seventeen-year-old transgender student that attends the Lee County School District. The bathrooms were a hot topic when she first came out and obviously, we're all here for a lot of the same reasons we were two years ago. There have been zero incidents that I'm aware of in the Lee County School District in the last two years that felt cause for all of the hate and the drama and the misinformation that is here tonight. Many of these concerns are initiated from fear, misinformation, and uneducated parents. My daughter, like many transgender individuals, has suffered from depression and suicidal ideation over the last couple of years. Approximately sixty-two percent of trans individuals report depression. Twenty-two to forty-three percent of trans individuals have attempted suicide in their lifetime. That is extremely terrifying as a parent of a transgender daughter. The federal laws are in alignment with what the school district has and I think that's just fair.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you, Board. My name is Devon Cranford. I'm the Student Body President at North Ramires High School. You may remember me from last time where a little bit of a ruckus was caused and I would like to start by apologizing for some of the anger I may have presented that night and any ruckus that I may have been a part of. I would then like to follow that up by saying, as an ally of the LGBTQ-plus community, I'm here to reaffirm my support for the poster being in the Code of Conduct and all of the practices that you have put in place to make our LGBTQ students feel safer. I would also like to notify the Board that after the last meeting, I have gone through my school, talked to students from all walks of life, all race, all sexual orientation, Democrat, Republican, liberal, conservative, and the overall consensus over the students that I know, I actually did not have a single student dissent me on this, is that we do support the policies you are taking. I have yet to find a student.
...in Sexuality Alliance Club. The district's goal is to ensure all students can reach their personal potential. We are just now making accommodations so that queer students can succeed in a safe environment and be able to reach their full potential. Every student has the right to feel safe and be their true authentic selves no matter where they are. To say our existence is confusing, dangerous, or harmful is intolerant and apathetic. Trans youth are just trying to have a normal high school experience among their cis peers. In this time, we are just now taking steps forward in the right direction. Let's not confuse ourselves and go backwards. Thank you, that is all.
Hello, I'm Alden Rivas and my pronouns are he/him. I'm the scary transgender student that you're all afraid of. Today, I'm standing here in alliance with my trans brothers, sisters, and siblings who have been wronged over and over again this past month. Me and every other LGBT student in Lee County needs representation because being LGBT in an area that is actively trying to take away our rights and representations is one of the most difficult things you can go through. Being transgender is very hard to begin with. Our homelessness and suicide rates are exponentially higher than our cis counterparts and taking away our representation and rights will only make it worse. And to the Board members, I leave with you this quote from Night by Ellie Weasel. "We must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. Sometimes we must interfere." Board members, please take, make the record.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katie Ireland and I'm one of the founders of the PLDMs Identity Club. I'm here in support of the trans community and I believe that they should have the ability to use the restroom that matches their gender identity. According to the American Psychological Association in two thousand seventeen, thirty-point-eight percent of trans people have considered attempting suicide and studies show that gender-affirming practices improve the mental health of trans students and help them feel safe. One of the most important steps in affirmation is the freedom of choice. They should be able to choose to align with their gender identity or at the very least, gender-neutral bathrooms, such as bathrooms in classrooms or offices. Additionally, trans students have a right to express their gender identity in schools. I am not dangerous and my fellow LGBTQ-plus people are not dangerous.
Good evening. My name is Jason Beckman. I'm a board member with Southwest Florida Pride. I just want to speak directly to LGBT young people, whether you are living openly or struggling with how to come out. Your life has value and worth. Don't let people who reject your dignity and your humanity keep you from achieving your dreams. That is something I never heard growing up as a young gay person, not at my home, not at school, not at church, not from anyone, but I wish I had because it would have made all the difference when I needed to hear it most. LGBT people exist and we are just trying to survive. My message to the Board is this: anything you can do to make sure that LGBT students know they are supported in our school districts, schools, I encourage you to do. It will save lives.
Thank you. Will the following individuals line up? Dylan Jefama, Bob Davidson, Stephanie Brooks, Matt Caldwell, Bradley McMaster, Brian Hammond.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Ford and I'm the current President of Pride Cape Coral. I would just like to thank the Board for all their efforts to maintain and protect the LGBTQ youth in our schools and giving them the right to freedom of expression. Now, there's something I want to talk about. This, this piece of paper, this poster that was in this Code of Conduct is a resource. It's a resource, it's not a policy. And for us to be litigating, litigating that resource here tonight and calling it, all these different, it's, it's actually baffling to me that we have to litigate a resource that these kids can use. It's not a policy, it is not telling somebody how to be or what to do, it is there to help these LGBTQ youth. Thank you. Sometimes all we need is visibility and affirmation.
Dylan Jebkamal, PLDMs Middle School Identity Club Advisor. Board, thank you for considering these topics. I'm a teacher that makes accommodations for my students to help them like we would any student needing accommodations. The Code of Conduct changes are very helpful and so is our awesome restorative justice program. Now, LGBT students have lined up to ask directly for accommodations that they need. They are a minority group in need. Please listen to them so that I may better provide them accommodations.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Brooks. Did you know that Florida ranks at the bottom across the U.S. for access to mental health care or that Florida is in the top five states for having the highest transgender identifying youth population? Well, it's true. It is well-understood that LGBTQ youth who reported facing greater rejection, violence, and discrimination reported a much higher rate of suicide and attempts. But here's the good news: we as a community can help combat that mental anguish caused by that discrimination by simply using their preferred pronouns and by keeping the current policies in place already outlined in this poster. Please don't buckle under pressure by bullying tactics used by those who are spreading harmful myths and inaccurate information. Good policies should not always, should always be rooted in facts and laws, not only because it's the right thing to do, but also because the children you'd be discriminating against very likely won't have the access to the mental health care that they need in time to avoid taking their own lives. Please do your part in supporting the mental health, their mental health by voting for the same policies you already had the courage to vote for last year. It could be the difference between life.
My name is Bob Davidson. I've been shrimping and farming in Pine Island since the fifties. I've. I've seen a lot in these many years, a lot of changes. I'm dumbfounded at the amount of abdication that's been shown by the Lee County School Board in taking the position of LGBTQ, the alphabet people, who are looking to superimpose their control over our traditional values. I'd like to know how many members of the school board or that panel that was on the dais have had any advanced training or accreditation in medicine, in child psychology, in development? We are going down the sewer of humanity when we are superimposing the votes of a minority over the will-
Thank you very much. Just a reminder to the speakers to avoid personal attacks on individuals or any type of derogatory language. Thank you.
Good evening, Matt Caldwell. Let me just first state that I believe, and I think everyone believes, that every single human being is a unique creation made in the image of God and worthy of protection and respect from conception all the way to natural death. What you need to take away from this and all the other board meetings is the failure of the district's process to adequately engage the public and understand where we want this district to go. I'm not living in a fantasy land, it's 2021, it is a complicated world, and the world that we have to deal with from kindergarten to high school is varied and complex. It's not lost on me. What you need to understand and take away, though, is that you are being misled by your staff regarding the legal cases, you're being misled regarding the nature of the conduct policies, you cannot adopt a poster and then expect it not to be presented in the schools you've empowered people to use it as a resource. You need to get serious as a board. You are the legislative body of this district. Take control.
Thank you. Will the following individuals please line up? Terri Miller, Danielle Wyberg, Christian LeBron, Lydia Black, Anthony Morales.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Brian Hammond, and I'm here tonight as a parent. Thank you for recommending the removal of the Equality Florida poster. Please remove those posters from our school. We want our students to feel safe, but how do we protect the sixth-grade girl who feels uncomfortable undressing next to someone with different body parts? They have a right to feel safe, too. Please do not take the poster's policies and then spread them out over the rest of the Code of Conduct. It already appears that's happening by changing the pronouns today and there. Please create a legally sufficient Code of Conduct that reflects the values of your community and does not keep secrets from parents. Look around. That's us. Look in the no-mask rooms, look in the lobby. Please, listen as closely to us as you do the students. You are our representatives, elected by us, to make sure that the school district reflects our values, and to the LGBT community, you are valuable, we don't hate you, we are not bigots, we are not uneducated. In fact, many of us are college-educated.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bradley McMaster. I'm a parent, longtime educator, and a school district employee. I urge you to keep the posters in our schools. When I go to school every day, we need to, it is a safe place for all of our students, all of our students, and I take that very seriously, that all of our students feel safe and included at all times. Thank you very much.
Here are the facts. Wink News reports, one of the biggest bombshells from last week's school board meeting was the fact that some school board members said they had never seen the poster being included in the conduct draft. School board member Mary Fisher says they will carefully read over every detail, the next draft of this conduct, of Code of Conduct. That leads me to believe dereliction of duty has taken place, and I'm not trying to blame any fingers here, but the facts are the facts. Everybody wants facts. The facts are, when I go to work, I have to do my job. If my job isn't being done effectively, it affects other people.
Can you state your name, please, sir?
Christian LeBron.
No clapping, please. Please don't forget to state your name when you come to the microphone.
My name is Terri Miller. You know, we're hearing words of hate, bigotry, and those aren't the right words. This is about safety for all students, and that includes my 15-year-old daughter, my 12-year-old daughter, when they go on a sports field, being able to compete against individuals of the same physical strength and abilities as they are. Should my 15-year-old daughter be on a football, or a soccer field, or on a softball field against a biological male? Should they be on a basketball court with them? Is there a safety level there? What about the comfort level of my children when they go in a restroom? Everyone deserves that same comfort level, not one segment of the population, not another segment, every single one. There are a lot of people here, not everybody's going to get to speak tonight. What we've seen is unprecedented. I want to show a hand. Who supports the policy as it is? Who opposes it? Thank you.
Will the following individuals please, no clapping, please, will the following individuals please line up? Anthony Morales, Jennifer Eskelson, Conia Truitt, Michelle Waldron, Rachel Spiller, James Murphy.
My name is Daniel Weberg, and in my house, my name is Dad. I came up here with some ideas, I was going to have a little speech given, but I've listened, and there's both sides of the fence here. Everyone needs to feel comfortable, everyone needs to feel, more importantly, anything else, free space to be educated, to become better people, live long, healthy, hopefully stressless lives, but good luck with that one. School is for education. Get through it, ABCs, 123s. I've said it before, last time I was up here, I'll say it again. There's a time and place for this kind of stuff. It's the family, it's the home. If you need more education as parents, please reach out to the resources that are available to us, they're all over the place, but take care of it in the home. This is not for schools to decide, not for schools to impose on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lydia Black, and I just want to recognize that sometimes it's the loudest voices that get to the spotlight quickly, so I want to apologize on behalf of folks like me who have not been loud enough to the young students in this room, that we've not been loud enough in sharing our voices about inclusion, about equity, and about kindness. To the Board, we recognize that you are facing loud pressure from a group to remove language supporting LGBTQ rights from the district's Code of Conduct. However, I am here to represent the many, many, many families who can't be here tonight, who sent emails and made phone calls to let you know that we do support your continued commitment to equity. This language is so important to reinforce Florida Department of Education standards and the school district's commitment to provide safe and inclusive learning environment for all students and all staff. I can only ask that you don't use our kids as a political pawn or political target. Our kids deserve more than that. I am encouraging board members to maintain the current language in the code, protecting LGBTQ students from bullying and discrimination, and most of all-
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Jennifer Eskelson. The school board and the local media are saying that some people have been spreading misinformation. Well, according to a document straight from the Lee County School Board's website, which most of you have a copy of, clearly states under restrooms that transgender students are allowed to use the restrooms of their expressed identity. That means that boys who have gone through the correct process and vice versa can use those restrooms of their choice. And under confidentiality, this states if a transgender student is not out to the parents or guardian, school staff are required to keep the information confidential from the parents. The school board attorney did not like me handing this document out, so I was walked out to the front door.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Michelle Waldron, and I'm a proud parent of two Lee County schools. First of all, I'd like to commend the Board, and I accept their removal of the poster as an acknowledgement that it was a mistake. I also accept that it was placed into that packet unbeknownst to them. I do not accept that they did not get it because of COVID. You were elected by us, and you had a duty to read it. I do accept that we were all under duress, and I do accept that you need a second chance. I ask you to rescind your vote. I ask you to not only take it out of next year's Code of Conduct, but I ask you to truly, truly, take it out of this year's and make a point-
Thank you. Next speaker. And before you speak, could you just give us a second so we can check on our technical difficulties? While we're waiting, will the following individuals please line up? Gretchen Shibe, Cheryl Harris, Curtis Hook, Kaylee Dombrowski, and Frances Elmore.
Yes, sir. My name's Conia Truitt. I'm here on behalf of my boys tonight. Five years ago, I was in a church service where I asked the pastor to please baptize my child, and I was told that the church would not accept that because of me and my wife. That day, I did not walk out of that church with any ill will towards them. That is their religious belief, and that is their right to make that decision. I still attended that church, because again, it is not my right to take their beliefs away from them. This school district has no right to take my beliefs or any other parent's beliefs, ever. I have a right to raise my children the way I want to without infringement from any group, especially a group who is a low minority of the population, including potentially under 1%. And as part of the LGBT community, I do not represent some of the beliefs that my child should be forced to learn the way the school wants to outside of education and education-
Thank you. Next speaker, please. No clapping, please.
Hi, my name is James Murphy. So why do we have separate bathrooms? I think the biggest thing I found online is safety. There's other reasons. If you're a wife and you have a husband or kids, I think you might understand what I mean. I'm pretty sure my wife doesn't want to go in my son's bathroom. Why are we wearing masks? I know that's getting old, but if our president himself says one mask doesn't work, he has to wear two.
This is your warning.
Sounds good. All right. The poster, I believe that's political propaganda that shouldn't have been in our schools, so take what you want for that. My son is a Christian, and I'll let you know that he was bullied last year. He's on Instagram with a Trump shirt, Trump hat, and a flag, and there's all kinds of Instagram from sterile high school students, all saying they're going to kick his butt.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Emery Wakefield Spiller, and I am a homeschool student under the county, but I'm speaking for the friends that shy away from speaking out to people who have direct authority over them. I am a homeschool student, but I've had enough teachers in my life to know what is right is not always popular and what is popular is not always right. Your decisions to include best practices from a trusted organization for LGBTQ+ equity was right. Nearly half of trans youth attempt suicide, nearly half. If these practices save a single life, if acceptance in equity grabs the hands of a single drowning student, then won't you find it worth facing the complaints of those who stand against equity and justice? In our schools, you think you're simply making decisions on a handbook, but I beg of you, know that you are making decisions that can come down to life or death. You have a responsibility for safety of the students, and tried and true best practices are what keeps all our students safe. I beg of you not to stand on the wrong side of history today. Even though many people use their religion to urge you towards discrimination, I am here to tell you that the divine is always-
Thank you.
My name is Cheryl Harris, and I'm here as a grandparent of four children in the district, and I'm appalled by the fact that when I saw the slide of the stakeholders who were included in generating this policy, parents and faculty weren't included. In fact, that went on to be recommendations for later, and I'd like to know why. As a grandparent, I look at this room, and I'd say, this crowd is interested in what's going on in this community, and we've been deprived of the access to know what's going on. Thank you.
My name is Gretchen Shibe. At newsgallop.com, the percentage of LGBT adults is 5%. So why should 95% give consent for a radical change in our local school policies? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kaylee Dombrowski. I'm the current president of GCU's College Democrats, one of the incoming co-chairs of GCU's Young Democratic Socialists of America, and I'm here today to comment on the nondiscrimination policy. This policy, which protects students and people who operate within the school system from discrimination against gender identity and sexual orientations, creates a safe and a healthy environment. It is important that you, as members of the Board, are able to look past the bigotry, the hatred of some people holding for the identities that belong within the LGBTQ+ community. Your job is to cultivate a safe school system for all those who inhabit it, and that means you must look past whatever your personal feelings are to protect students and its faculty. Please do not make concessions based off of the fear-mongering and bigotry brought here by today, by today by some, and listen to the students who have spoken. Thank you for your time.
Will the following individuals please line up? Terri Watt, Quinton Jesky, Michael Chirbene, Yaprham Devahanyan, DeeDee Henderson.
Hello. My name is Frances Elmore. My pronouns are he/him/his. I'm a rising graduate student at Florida Gulf Coast University, and I graduated from Dunbar High School in 2016. Good inclusive policy is the first step to undo the harm that my trans peers and I have historically faced. Thank you, Board, and I encourage you to keep this policy and this poster in so that more students, like the trans high schoolers and middle schoolers I've spoken to tonight, who, I think I missed a sentence, to give more futures like the ones to the trans high schoolers and middle schoolers that I've spoken to tonight that know they are empowered to stand up to adult bullies and bad faith actors who don't want them to be safe. I couldn't imagine coming out in high school. I didn't have my parents home to sign paperwork to jump through any hoops you wanted me to jump through. They were not there for me, and I didn't know I could reach out to people who were there for me at my school. Thank you. Trans people matter, and trans students won't be erased.
My name is Curtis Houck. I just want to ask our leaders to treat this issue with the same two strategies that are stated successfully used during the coronavirus experience. One, provide loving care and support for those most affected, but don't destroy the rest of the population in the process. Two, leave the freedoms to choose in the hands of the people, and in this case, that is the parents. Thank you.
You gotta keep my time back, I haven't started, please. Trying to cheat everything here. My name's Yaprham Devahanyan, Lehigh Acres, Florida. I had a list of things, but I'll just get to the chase. I'm against this board for what they're doing. You know what? I have a neighbor that's from Iraq, and he can't believe, he says, "They throw transgender and gays off roofs." His son can't believe what's going on, and he's attending this school system. You know, our religion is just pushed into the ground, but you put this gay community and transgender stuff ahead of everything else. God is great, and God shit. You've cut out prayers at this school board meeting. You've cut out prayers at this school board meeting. Every government agency has prayers ahead of their meetings. All of you should resign.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please?
Hello. My name is Carrie West. My pronouns are she/her. I am the president of the Florida Gulf Coast University Gender and Sexuality Alliance, and I'm here just in support of trans students. I would like to speak on the thing that matters here the most, and that is our students and their safety. I lived through four years of high school in fear of being hated for who I am, afraid to be myself, and a time so pivotal to a child's development. Every person I came out to was one more risk I was taking of being outed and harassed from my identity, and this is a universal experience for trans people. The rhetoric tonight revolves around bathrooms and imaginary predators, but allow me to point out that just recently, a bill was nearly passed into law by the Florida Legislature that allows for adults to inspect the genitals of student athletes. Transphobes spend so much time building up this idea that trans people are sexual predators, and then decide to attempt to pass molestation into law. I, for one, just need to use the bathroom, and I'm terrified the entire time someone will take an action based out of ignorance. So I ask, who is the predator? Thank you.
Will the following individuals please line up? Sharon Matey, Reverend John Matey, Angelie Vasquez, Janice Vital, and Holly Marth?
Greetings. My name is Michael Chirbene, and I speak as a card-carrying member of the Democratic Socialists of America, as a member of FGCU's Gender and Sexuality Alliance, and as a student of Cypress Lake High School on an issue that I think is pressing for some students here in Lee County. Transgender students deserve to succeed as much as any other student in the county, and we are happy to see that accommodations for these students are in place. Trans students deserve to be in a nurturing environment where they feel safe. Anyone who is against these accommodations are doing harm to children where all they want is to feel safe in their schools. As I come here, I saw people with placards with biblical passages in opposition to trans accommodations. It's sad that the Lord's Word is being used to degrade the rights of children. If you are a true Christian, I kindly implore you to reconsider your minds and bestow grace and love to all.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello. My name is Quinton Jesky. I use he/him pronouns. I'm a pre-medical student at FGCU and treasurer of GSA and YDSA. I graduated from North Fort Myers High School in 2018. I can't imagine what it would have meant to see a poster affirming I had a valued place in my school, to know my school district cared about me and that those values were reflected in the code of conduct and breast practices. To know I'm not considered a hushed topic for in the home. My heart is warmed by the LGBTQ students and allies that have come here tonight. I'm a voter as well. And I urge the board to defend these students, listen to them, and stick to the values of progress this board claims. I urge you to keep the code as is. And parents, you're here because you care about your children. I ask that that care extend to their transgender peers as well. They're just kids.
My name is DeeDee Henderson, and I wanted to let all of the LGBTQ people know. I support you guys 110%. I do not discriminate. That's not who I am. But as far as the bathrooms go, I personally do not agree with that. I do not feel safe with another person who identifies as a female but is biologically a male. I personally do not agree with that. Now, that is not saying that I do not support neither one of you guys. I support all of you guys. I personally have friends who are part of the LGBTQ+ community, and I do support them on the daily. Now, they have also told me that they also do not feel safe going into another bathroom with their gender identity, meaning that me as a female, if there is another person in there that's a male that identifies as a female, they have said that if there's a female in there, they do not get along. Then what's going to happen is for the safety for both parties. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angelie Vasquez. I'm a mother of a third grader in Kip Coral School. There's a lot I could say, but I'll start with a quote from another mother named Mary Lou Walner. "Undoubtedly, the most difficult part of your letter is the gay thing. I will never accept it. I feel it is a terrible waste, despite being spiritually and morally wrong. I have a harder time dealing with that issue than almost anything in the world. I do and will continue to love you, but I will always hate that." That is an excerpt from the letter that preceded her daughter's suicide. The loss prompted a learning journey about LGBT people and faith, and the conclusion that she came to is that what she'd been taught was empirically wrong. There are parents here speaking against LGBTQ students that have kids in the LGBTQ community. They just don't know it yet. All a child, I imagine that that parent is going to find that love and understanding, but maybe the difference between a good parent and a good person is whether you want that for other children is the same as you would for your own.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Holly Marth. I actually sit on three different diversity and equity committees, so I do know a little bit about what I'm talking about. I'm also a mom. I'm also a brand-new grandmother. I went through the Lee County school system. All three of my kids went through the Lee County school system. As I'm listening to all of y'all, I'm writing down notes. Personal potential, safety, rights, parents' rights. Everyone's life has value and worth. This life has value and worth. The LGBTQ folks, I love y'all. The straight folks, I love y'all. I'm a Christian. It is my job to love, not to judge, as a Christian. But I'm going to tell y'all something. I'm also chubby. My daughter is bisexual. She came out in high school. She got picked on more for being chubby than she did being bisexual. I think we all deserve to have rights, and we all deserve to be listened to, but don't, just be nice about it, guys, please.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenny Vitell. I have a first grader in the Lee County School District. I want to thank Ms. Gittens for bringing up what students had shared with her as far as not wanting to be singled out or labeled. It completely changed what I wanted to say today. Nobody in this room has the right to tell when somebody else's child is ready to be discussed with these types of topics. It shouldn't be forced upon parents with young children in elementary school. How you cover this topic in elementary school should not be the same as how it's addressed in middle and high school. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Matey, and I've been teaching children for over 50 years. So in my circle of friends that are children, there are many, many different types. And among them are those who have chosen to do what we see represented here tonight. I love them. I've gone to their birthday parties. I've embraced whatever I can, support them. But tonight, we have not seen another type of child representative represented here tonight. Those are the ones I'm concerned about tonight. Do they feel the same sense of freedom that these kids are expressing for themselves tonight? You would be surprised how many of those kids do not feel safe in their own school because of what we see presented here tonight. They feel like outsiders that should never be in the country called freedom. So I ask that we reconsider about that poster and take them down.
Will the following individuals please line up? Jeffrey Hercom, Shelby Tyndell, Matthew McWaters, Alyssa Bernharseth, Bella Larisse?
My name is John Matey. On December the 7th, 1941, Japan attacked Pearl Harbor. Shortly after that, Japan said, "Uh-oh, I think we made a mistake. I don't think we should have attacked them. I think we awakened a big giant." Well, let me tell you something. I'm a pastor, and I know a lot of pastors in Lee County. I belong to a big group of pastors. I belong to a big group of pastors in Florida. And I'm afraid, school board, the decisions that you've made, that you have awakened a big giant. And you better build a bigger auditorium because we pastors and our churches are going to start coming to these meetings.
Thank you. Next, please, no clapping. We've been doing a really great job. Everybody's been respectful. I appreciate your cooperation. We have some more speakers, so please, let's allow them to speak.
Sharon McGill. And I'd just like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to come out like this and comment, and for your service to the community. It's not always an easy job. I support the poster and the code of conduct because everyone had the opportunity to read that code of conduct. It's been in place since September of the school year. Now, it's everybody's responsibility to know what's in that code of conduct. The poster is only a representation and a resource of that code. And I hope that going into the next school year, the board really thinks about keeping that inside. And students in general want to be accepted. It seems like more it's the parents who are projecting their thoughts and actions onto their kids.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeffrey Herco. I am a member of the Florida Bar and a local attorney in this community. First, thank you for moving the meeting time to this evening. It is obviously difficult for many working people to make daytime meetings, and the ability to come out here and speak is invaluable. Second, I want to continue to thank the board for prioritizing the safety and acceptance of our students and our community. I want to encourage you to continue the process you have started. You have hired experts and panelists to review the information, gather knowledge from your community, and review it thoughtfully. You consult with your board attorney on the Florida law and what is the appropriate practice for the future of Lee County students. If you focus on the safety and acceptance, listen to your counselors, listen to your attorneys. I know that the board will make the right legal decision.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Matthew McWaters. I am a member of the community. I just wanted to compliment the board on including the poster in the code of conduct, and I would like to urge them to continue to keep it in the code of conduct. Our community works best when it embraces diversity and includes everybody at the table, and I think that we should continue to do that. Thank you very much.
My name is Shelby Tyndell. I'm a guest teacher for the Lee County School District, as well as a former student at Riverdale High School. I'm here today in support of the LGBTQ community and in the support of the inclusion in the student contact, in the student code of conduct at the very least. I'm here to ask you to listen to our students, that our students' best interests be the deciding factors. Ensuring that our LGBTQ students are safe does not take away the safety of any other students. Many students that I've heard at these meetings discussing their safety and their inclusion have asked you to listen to them, for they themselves know who they are best, and they know what they need to succeed more than any strangers claim to. It is not just our job to teach our students a basic education and send them on their way. It's our job to make sure our students feel safe, respected, supported, and included while they learn. We need to listen to our students, for it is their lives and their experiences that will be directly affected by your decisions.
Will the following individuals please line up? Rick Stevens, Brenda Clark, Ricardo Andreas Broenegra, Mike Rodriguez, and Bella Perez?
Hello. My name is Alyssa Bernhardt. I'm a sophomore at North Fort Myers High School, and I'm here to provide a student perspective on this issue. Never once have I ever felt harmed or confused by an LGBTQ+ student or teacher expressing their gender identity. In fact, it is basic respect to allow these individuals to be who they are. Using the correct pronouns is not an issue. It is basic respect. I've heard many arguments against this poster that could harm LGBTQ+ students. Taking away their representation in schools and treating the subject like it doesn't exist will only take away the respect that everyone deserves and cause more confusion. Suppressing their rights to be who they are is dangerous. As a matter of fact, trans students are four times more likely to experience depression, and young LGBTQ+ individuals are over two times more likely to feel suicidal and more than four times as likely to attempt it. Please take this into consideration when you are announcing your dislike of the inclusivity and respect that this poster promotes. Please keep it.
Hello, my name is Alessandra Bella Lanis, and I'm a current student government representative at North Fort Myers High School. I came here today to give a student's perspective on the recent proposed rules for transgender students in Lee County schools. Many of my peers do not believe that these rules are an issue. However, the main concerns from the student body are possible sexual harassment or bullying based on identity. These fears have been in many students' minds recently. If you are unaware, this last Saturday, April 24th, was known on social media as a national sexual assault holiday by pedophiles. These people would harass females specifically, and report to each other how many they had harmed that day. I feel that this is relevant to the school board because it is your job to have hotlines and resources available to those who have been affected by harassment such as this. I feel like higher securities and restrooms in schools can reduce these occurrences, therefore making sure that all students feel safe on campus. And also, please make sure that you listen to your kids about these issues being presented today. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rick Stevens, resident of Lee County. As I've listened to this conversation over the last few weeks, it seems apparent, and even it's come up tonight, that we agree on a few things. One is that all students deserve respect. And we who believe that people are created in the image of God understand that all people deserve respect. We're happy to do that. We've also heard from many people, including a number on each side of this issue, that parents need to listen to their students, listen to their children. And I think most of us agree that that's the case. We want our parents and our children to have these kinds of conversations. The problem seems to be that our schools have inserted themselves in that conversation in a way that we find inappropriate and not helpful for families or students. This policy must be changed. Apparently, Equality Florida and other such advocates are having more influence on school policy than the taxpayers, residents, parents of Lee County. This must change.
Hello, my name is Mike, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Patriots for Freedom Organization and myself. And regarding this policy, I asked my 12-year-old daughter about sharing a bathroom or a restroom with a biological male or boy. And her exact words were, "That, I would be terrified." But aside of that, or more than that, I'm here extremely concerned about our children. You know, this policy is supposed to start, I guess, five years and over, right? So you're telling me that out there, there might be a 5-, 10-year-old transgender kids? I mean, seriously? And if there are, I'm telling you right now, that's the radical parents indoctrinating them, and schools with policies like this one indoctrinating them, okay? Because the thing that, just by thinking, a 5-year-old, a 10-year-old, heck, even a 12-year-old, they can barely wipe their own behind correctly, and they're going to be thinking about being transgender? That's absurd. So please, stop confusing these children and repeal this policy. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Bella Perez, and I'm here today because a few weeks ago, at this meeting regarding the same issue, there was a boy, and he said, "Parents, for once, talk to your children." And I'm willing to bet that many parents here actually do talk to their children, and that is why they're here today, including my father, who was also here today. He asked me what I would feel if there was a boy, a biological boy, in the bathroom at the same time with me. I told him I would feel very uncomfortable and terrified. I told him, "I don't care if he identifies as a girl, Superman, Batman, heck, even an animal. I would still feel very uncomfortable." So I'm here to ask you to please repeal this policy and remove the posters. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ricardo Broenegra. My pronouns are he/them. I just got something to say. We won't disappear if you take down a poster, and we won't be silenced by grumpy geriatrics who don't know how to show up on time enough to abide by the time that they asked for. We aren't asking for a head start.
Wait, sir, sir, please, no personal attacks. Let's be respectful to everyone.
We aren't asking for a head start. We are asking to meet you at the starting line so we can have a fair chance at this race. For years, we were either dying of AIDS, or, as you look to the side, or we were murdered in dirty motel rooms since you wouldn't hire us in the first place. And since I have the opportunity, never mind, I'm going to end this with respect and love today. Have a good day. Listen to your kids. Have a good day. Listen to your kids. We just want to exist. I'm literally here because I have tried to kill myself multiple times because students have called me a fag in the classroom. Teachers even, actually, behind their backs that I have heard of. I have tried to take in my own life multiple times.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Brenda Clark. I think we're ignoring the fact that all children need to be acknowledged. Everybody thinks that only gay and transgender people commit suicide. That's not true. My cousin committed suicide. He's not gay. He's not transgender. He needed help, but all I'm seeing is that the only people that need help are gay and transgender. I think all children need to be created, treated equally. Everybody needs to have the attention of counseling, and, you know, I was here a few weeks ago. There was a sign on one of the doors that had a rainbow flag on it that said, "Safe Space." To me, as a straight person, I was, I felt like I couldn't use that space because it was only allotted for gay people. So to me, if my child saw that and she was straight, she wouldn't feel like she could be in a safe space. So I think we need to get it out of the schools, let the parents.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public comments for this evening.
Okay. I've taken so many notes from everything all of you have said, and I, first of all, want to say that we do appreciate and we do listen to what our constituents and our, our community says. I have my own personal thoughts on this, and I wrote down a lot of notes. However, it would be inappropriate for me to say any of my own personal beliefs on this as the presiding officer for this meeting. So I'm going to leave it at, all of us, I believe, in this room are committed, and all of us in this school district, on this, including the board and everybody in the school district, we're committed to ensuring that all our students feel safe and respected and included. It doesn't mean, this, this particular meeting, the focus has been on LGBTQ, and I've heard a few people saying, "Well, we can't have the 5% ruling that..." It, it's, it's not that. The focus here has been on this one particular community. But we here in the district embrace all the children. The children who are disabled, physically disabled, who, the, the children who are from families of immigrants, a lot of families that may have religious beliefs that are not in the mainstream of the religions here in the county. All of these children. They're all our children, and I was a little disturbed, and here's a little bit of my personal, I can't help it, when I heard a few people make a comment about not accepting certain people, that it, that it was an anathema to people of faith. I, I take pause at that, and I'm not going to comment any further on that. But if you can take one thing away tonight, remember that we are here because we are dedicated to serving your children and our next generation. And I'll end it with saying that about a month ago, I sat in on a, a meeting at Astero High School, and it was the, let me make sure I get the exact name right, the Gender and Sexuality Alliance Group. And the youngsters that were there, the teens that were there, I was so impressed because they weren't all gay, and they weren't, I mean, they, they were supportive of each other, and they listened to each other, and they were empathetic to each other. And when I wrote my note back to Mr. Amabel, who's the principal of Astero High School, I said to him how much I enjoyed being at that meeting and listening to what those students had to say. And I said, and he agreed, "We as adults can learn a lot from our children." So that's all I want to say for board comments, or actually for comments on the public comments. All right, so this takes us to board member comments. I'm going to start in the middle with Ms. Jordan. Do you have any comments tonight?
Well, we, we definitely have heard a lot this evening, and I appreciate each and every one of you coming out and sharing your point of views, and this is something that we definitely will be looking at as we move forward. And I just want to reiterate it again, you know, we want to make sure that all of our children are safe and that they always will have a place to come to in the schools and to learn and not worry about being bullied or hassled or anything else. So I just want to, just remind you all that again. We are here, you know, for all of you. So we, again, appreciate you coming here and sharing, all of you. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fisher? Yes. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone who came to share their opinions, which I hear and I respect. I am especially proud of our students and their behavior tonight because they were definitely responsible, reliable, ready, and good role models. So thank you. We are a public school system, and we have to comply with the federal and state laws, our own policies, which now include LGBTQ. So we look at the First Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, the 1964 Civil Rights Act, Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972, the Florida Constitution, the Florida Anti-Discrimination Act, and the Jeffrey Johnston Stand Up for All Students Act, which I actually had the opportunity to work with Jeffrey's mother and a group of students in advocating for that law, not only in Tallahassee but in Washington. Our policy 1.27, as I said, now includes sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, which it did not previously. We want, as a school system, to be diverse, inclusive, accepting, and welcoming of all students for any group, minority or marginalized. And then I have a statement that my great-granddaughter, who is a freshman at a local high school, sent because she could not get in tonight. She said, "What should I do?" I said, "Come early next time." So I just want to get to her statement and try to read it to you guys. She says, "The reality of having more eyes on a topic, no matter how controversial or not, is that we have even greater opportunity to learn more. The fact of the matter is that by the board acknowledging this community and our student body, it gives a voice to those that may have otherwise gone unheard. The freshman class of this high school thanks the board for their care and attention. So thank you for your continuation of what is happening, Allison. Thank you all." Mrs. Patrica, please.
I want to start by, I'm saying I'm going to give my full board a report tomorrow night, if that's okay. It's getting late. Thank you, Ms. Gittens, for the suggestion and working with Chair Jordan to move the meeting to tonight as opposed to the morning. Thank you to law enforcement, Chief Newlin, and staff for keeping order here tonight. Really, really, really appreciate you guys. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you for the emails. I cannot tell you, I'm in my fifth year on the board, and I have never received more emails on one topic than I have on this. And I have read as many of them as humanly possible. I can almost guarantee you I will not be able to respond to all of them. I'm not like a county commissioner who has a, an assistant who can respond to my emails for me. It's just me. So I don't want you to think the emails have gone unread. I mean, some of them have. I haven't read them all yet, but they will all be read. I want you to know that, you know, when you reach out, I am, I am reading, I am hearing. Mr. Cranford, Devin, is that you in the back? I am mortified by the way you were treated two weeks ago in this boardroom. I am absolutely mortified. And I will tell you that for the first time, I think I really understood the way some of our students feel and the need for protection. So I'm sorry that you had to go through what you had to go through, but it was a really enlightening moment for me as, as a school board member, just to see what, what you went through. And I'm really, really sorry that we couldn't protect you in that moment. You apologized tonight. There is no reason for you to apologize. So just you, and, I mean, you made me so proud two weeks ago, and all of the students who came out to speak tonight made me really proud as well. I believe that, that there is a way for us to protect all students, and I also believe that there is a way to protect parental rights. Parental rights are fundamental. When you look at the Constitution, there are certain rights that, that receive more protections than others, and parental rights are amongst those rights. So I understand the need for protection, and I understand the need for student rights, but I also understand the need for parental rights. So those are my comments for now. I look forward to future discussions with the public on this. Thank you.
Thank you. And if, if any, I, it would be nice, we would appreciate it. Okay. I was just going to say that those who are standing in the back of the room having conversations, if you could please step in the hall to continue your conversations, but that appears to have ceased. So Mrs. Giannelli.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the board that a few months back, I did request to have an LGBT advisory committee. I think that that would have helped us with this process, giving them a voice and a seat at the table. I think that, that committee is something that we should probably think about. But I still want to apologize for those who were unable to, that did not get a chance to actually get to speak tonight. But I want to thank every person that came out, all the emails I received. There was way too many for me to even respond to. But I want to, you know, the stakeholders, everybody's voice matters. Your opinions matter. All matter to me. This controversy surrounding the 2021 Student Code of Conduct has brought to light the clear intention to implement language and directives that the board was not aware of. The implementation of this graphic into the current code of conduct has failed to benefit anyone as our own staff, students, and parents were not able to be made aware of this information it contained, and training was not provided. At tomorrow, at tomorrow's action meeting, I will bring forth a motion to repeal the Equality Florida graphic from the 2021 Student Code of Conduct. I had been made aware, if, had I have been made aware of these changes before the 2021 Code of Conduct, I would have made a different decision, and if it had been brought to my attention. If my motion fails tomorrow night, I will move to strike my yes vote from the record. I appreciate the feedback I've received from everyone in this community on this matter. Please know that I am here to serve you. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Okay. Mrs. Gittens?
Okay. Oops. I want to remind everyone to please check out the Seahawks Eye, the Cape, I keep getting it wrong, Cape Coral, right? Cave Coral High's paper.
Seahawks.
The title of the article is "Controversy Over LGBTQ Poster: A Year-Old Poster Causes a Stir in Lee County." One of the students that participated in the discussion that we had for three hours on that last Saturday wrote this article. And one of the things I loved about the, the graphic that she did, it was her decision to do that graphic with the hand and the different colors. I just want to give a shout out to the students that worked on the, the comments that I mentioned earlier. Jace Hall, Reese Hall, Frankie Just, Eden, and Ellie Hoffman, Keith Marino, Carly Carey, and Melanie Pena. This article, really, I, I would hope that everyone would sit down and read it. It kind of encapsulates all that many of you have said. I said earlier, we have to find some common ground. We can't start from just polarization and expect to get anything done. A lot of you mentioned the founding fathers and the Constitution, and when they were preparing the Constitution, they found common ground, which is why we have it. If they never found common ground, there would not be one Constitution. There would be two or three. I just want to, I'm going to say something else here real quick. And I had, on our last workshop on the 12th, I had asked about rescinding the portion of the Student Code of Conduct that had the poster in it so that we could do just this, discuss it and decide what we needed to do. And I did not have any support from the board to do that. They said that we were going to meet today, and so they didn't want to discuss it. I mentioned before about making sure, we talk about inclusion, and I was going to say something else. I changed my mind. So I just want to finish off by saying, in my mind, the poster was a resource to our Student Code of Conduct and a policy. When you look at our policies, they have numbers, and lines are numbered and all of that. Okay, so specifically, it was not in the specific policy. But the students that I had worked with said, for example, with the dress code, we already have dress code policy. So there it is. Read that article that I was telling you about. And as far as what I feel about this, the policy as a whole is not to discriminate against anyone. It's more about finding ways to help everyone feel comfortable, including students, parents, staff, and taxpayers. We know that we're here because of you. We know that the lights are on in the school down the street from you, or the one that your children go to, are because of you. We know that. And we want to get your input. I thank you for being calm and going through this process and listening to everyone else. I appreciate that from all of you, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Okay. Mrs. Morgan?
Coming almost at the end, there's really nothing I can add. I, I will second the comments that have been made by my colleagues. I am really grateful to the students who came tonight and spoke. And I'm also grateful for all the emails that we have gotten. And like everybody else, there is no possible way I can answer every email that I've received. But I will tell you that I do read each email, and there were some that came from students and from parents that talked about their personal experiences, and those were the ones that really resonated with me. I, I'm grateful that everybody came tonight and that we got to hear from all points of view. Everybody was, was essentially speaking about our common humanity and how we find a place together where we can respect the rights of students and respect the rights of, of, of parents. So as I said, I can't add anything to what other board members have said, but I just want you to know where I'm coming from. So thank you for being here, and I look forward to more conversations about how we proceed. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm, I'm going to echo some of the things that... Okay, and I'm going to echo some of the things that the six people talking before me have said. Emails, yes, I have read the emails. I'm still reading the emails, and I have answered as many as I possibly can, even sitting, watching TV, putting the TV on pause during a commercial, reading a few more, answering a few more. So I've done the best I can, but rest assured, as most of the rest of the board has said, we are reading what you have said, and we do take heed from it. And I'm so glad Ms. Patrica mentioned Devin, because I had that, that I wanted to mention, actually, in my earlier comments. That was heartbreaking to me, that adults in the room would have treated a student that way. And Devin's principal wrote to all of us the next day, and just FYI, all of our students are stars, but Devin is a superstar student. He's an outstanding student from leadership and grades and contributions that he's made to his school. And we need to keep in mind that, as I said before, we as adults, and I'm not, I'm including myself, we could learn a lot from our children, from their humanity, as somebody said, their loving nature, their empathy, sometimes things that we, as we get caught up in too much politics in the world, as we get caught up in that, that sometimes, and again, I'm going to put myself right out there on the guilty list, get involved too deeply with, and we forget that God created all of us and we're all His children. So Attorney DePree Bruno, do you have comments?
No, I do not, but I do want to thank the public for your cooperation this evening and having a smooth public comment.
Dr. Atkins, comments from you?
Yeah, I agree with our board attorney. I think this evening, everyone was able to talk and be heard, and so I appreciate that. I'm very proud of our students. You guys have already recognized that. They always continue to amaze, and the courage to come down here and speak, again, is just amazing to me. I do want to say thank you to our staff that presented this evening, and also those behind the scenes. It really, we're accommodating a much larger group than normal, so trying to do that and manage it in such a way that makes it efficient, you know, they put a lot of effort into it, as did the folks that gave the presentation under, you know, less than desirable circumstances. So my hats off to them. And then finally, to our security team and law enforcement, who have always been wonderful partners, I just want to say thank you very much. That's all for my comments this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, seeing that we have concluded the business of this meeting, we are adjourned.